Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In this regular meeting in the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groot, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Before we proceed with the agenda this evening, I'd like to announce that an amendment, or actually a couple amendments to the agenda were proposed and posted yesterday because the amendments were proposed after the agenda was originally posted. And less than forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, the amended agenda cannot become effective without a motion and vote of council. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda with the addition of new consent calendar item six K, amendment number two to memorandum of understanding with independent highway district along with the typographical correction under item eight A, informational workshop on the multimodal transportation plan east-west connection concept. Is there a motion?
So moved second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes and we will proceed with the amended agenda. Please note that for this evening's informational workshop on the adopted multimodal transportation plan, there will be an opportunity for questions from the public, but there will not be any public comments during the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. So if you have questions and you've not had an opportunity to fill it, to write your questions yet, please write down your questions. There's forms available for you up front by the front door. You can hand those questions to Jennifer up front here. You're collecting. Okay, the chief is collecting the questions. So if you have questions, I know many of you are here to speak on the MTTP, the master plan. If that is the case, please write down your comments and hand them to the chief there. And your questions will be read when we get to that agenda item and answered. If you let's see. If you're on Zoom, of course, and would like to submit a question and you did not already submit by email prior to the meeting, you're welcome to email your question to cityclerk@sandpointidaho.gov. Sandpoint Idaho spelled out. That's cityclerk@sandpointidaho.gov. Staff is monitoring that account during the meeting and will be sure to collect those questions for that agenda item. And the purpose of that, the informational workshop is going to be a little different this time. We used to have it that we have in the past had at the back table down there because of the number of people in the room and there's even people outside, I believe, perhaps. We can't really accommodate it back there. We don't have the sound and audio capabilities that we have up here, so everyone in the room may not be able to hear if we, if we do it in the back of the room like we have in the past. And as far as collecting the written questions, what we find with a topic like this is we will have many, the same question repeated over and over. So this gives us an opportunity to save everyone's time and group the questions together in the interest of all of our time. So, thank you. I have a proclamation to read this evening for Week of the Young Child. Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children is celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April first through seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas we are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens, which can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Sandpoint, Idaho. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Sandpoint deserve our thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. Now, therefore, I, Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of the City of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April first through seventh, two thousand twenty-three as the week of the young child in Sandpoint and encourage all citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood in our community. Proclaim this fifteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-three in the City of Sandpoint Bonner County, Idaho. Are there any announcements from council?
I have an announcement here.
Yeah.
I just want to recognize the passing of Eric Darstead this last week. He was a wonderful human being and I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to meet him, but he will sincerely be missed in our community. And we are all very proud of him to be a Sandpoint citizen.
Thank you. Other comments or announcements, staff announcements?
We don't have any tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or in any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a comment form up front again by the door and hand it to city staff. The chief's still walking around the room if you need it. Just a reminder again that our general public forum time is limited to items listed on the consent calendar or items not on the agenda. So again, there will, we will not be accepting public comment during the public forum portion of the meeting. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up or would like to speak during the public forum this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Jeremy Grimm.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak during the public forum. The police chief has already talked to me and we came to an agreement that I will not speak to item number eight A. But the very fact that we had that conversation is what I want to talk to you about. This is Sandpoint. Look yourselves in the mirror. You've got your people here who want to speak and let you know how they feel about something you're potentially adopting that's going to transform our community. And we can't. We are mute. Is this what you consider to be government? Come on! This never happened before. This all started in two thousand and fifteen when we changed to a city administrator former government. That needs to change.
Madam Clerk?
Molly McCann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Molly McCann, Sandpoint, for the record. I do appreciate the difficult job you all have, but as a resident who is engaged in city planning and as someone who grew up as a free-range kid here in Sandpoint, I want to share my concerns for what seems like public exclusion and wasteful spending. A great deal has been invested into master planning and consultants. These plans have staff and resources so tied up, there is no time for the immediate needs of the community. I like the idea of participating in the comprehensive planning process, but I have been too busy chasing down master plans and regular amendments. It seems like it should be reversed, comp plan, then master plans. If I could trust the master plan process, it would be one thing, but instead I am constantly blindsided by decisions that go totally against the community's wants. You could, how can you expect the public to have confidence in these plans when they so regularly change? The rubber stamping of the Sand Creek ordinance without design standards was shocking to me. The decision to give away the public right-of-way off Bridge Street to Gunning's Alley and Sand Creek for high-rise condos is still unthinkable. The decision to demolish a truly unique and valued playground at Travers for a limited-use building that could go elsewhere goes against logic. And finding out that the curve from years past made it into the multimodal plan only because the Boyer Amendment showed up on an agenda is disrespectful to the community. As a taxpayer, I literally pay the city to provide services. Those services, in addition to keeping the roads maintained, waste management, and sewer and water, are meant to include keeping me informed, adequately informed, on potential decisions and funding expenditures that might affect me or impact me. I don't feel this is happening. Instead, keeping up with the city feels like a job. And I have been resenting that deeply. If we are expected to stand up here and speak in public, which is terrifying to most, and in three minutes provide input on complex issues, then it is more than reasonable for you to do the hard work, too. Go door-to-door. Have neighborhood meetings. Hold better workshops. Design better surveys. Even when officially invited to a stakeholder group like the downtown waterfront design competition, I still am left in the dark. Uninformed that there is another luxury condo planned where Zero Point and AMPs exist now and in the area we were specifically discussing. The current process for public engagement feels disingenuous to me. And I urge you to slow down and start providing clear and realistic communication with the public on these significant decisions that impact our quality of life and our bottom line. Thank you for listening.
Please note clapping or public disruption during the meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Steve Holt?
Evening. My name is Steve Holt. I moved here, I think, in nineteen ninety-three and have worked on sort of a myriad of issues since I got here. First, it was sort of the bypass. And then I've since taken on some environmental issues with the Lake Ponderay Waterkeeper, but I've always been involved in transportation. I was a founding member of BCAT back in the nineties. I own property along what is now the curve, so I've been dealing with Idaho Truck Department of Transportation since two thousand and five when they were wanting me to move the grain elevator off of our property. So being a resident for that long, I've attended and participated in a lot of different issues with the city and we did a lot of different workshops on a lot of different topics and workshops. You know, back in the day seemed like it was, hey, let's get together, roll up our sleeves, sit around a table and you have a conversation about it. And that, and that's what happened. And it seemed to be pretty successful and I, I felt really good about you know, a person's ability to be able to participate in government. And then I think it started with the Sand Creek Ordinance where I went to a quote-unquote workshop. And right at the last minute, we were informed that this wasn't really a workshop for the public. It's a workshop to inform the city council members about where we were on the issue at the time. And then that definition of workshop went from that to what, I don't even know what it is. You know, this is labeled as a workshop on the agenda, but it doesn't really feel like much of a conversation. So I think it would behoove the city council would really give the guidance to the public if we understood exactly what the definition of a workshop was and how best for our citizenry to participate. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Rebecca Holland.
Give me a minute. I gotta get my computer here. Good evening, council. Rebecca Holland, for the record, not a Sandpoint resident at the moment, but I'll be back. With an overly long agenda, I will keep my comments on point with prepared texts. Mayor's proclamation tonight, supporting young children, is fitting for this council to reflect on, especially in light of an issue before you later tonight. Let me first say, it is seen as highly principled for public officials to prioritize children and their needs. Especially when others of more influence try to grab the thunder. When recognizing this and making decisions in favor of the children, know that you are gaining the loyalty votes of local residents wanting Sandpoint to remain a family-friendly community. Sandpoint residents often hear the city is working to craft solutions to reflect the citizens' vision of our city. So locals attend workshops, fill in surveys, and hopes they can guide the city toward this vision. As an example, a few years back, there was a Traverse Parks survey done when Parks and Rec master plan was being developed. A large fifty-eight percent of respondents say they go to the park for the children's playground, compared to twenty-eight percent for tennis. Community vision, children's needs. In fact, for handicapped children, the playset at Travers is the only ADA access playset in the city. In the fall and now spring coming, the head teacher for the large Farm and Stidwell program for students with disabilities told me just yesterday that he regularly takes his students there. They walk from Farm and Stidwell. By the way, oops, I'm gonna move this down. At the last council meeting I attended, you were told this play equipment is old, out of compliance, but truth is, it's twelve years old, structurally sound, set in concrete, only needs some basic TLC to improve ground surface, some plastic mats for better ADA access to some of the equipment, fix the cracks to the concrete that have settled in twelve years. Two grants from foundations that support people with disabilities along with our matching community funds totaling fifty thousand dollars funded this. That's a lot of value to tear down. With no guarantee, and you know it, that a half million dollar state grant, which taxpayers will have to match, will even come through. In the meantime, kids don't have anything, right?
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is an agenda I should probably
No, that's for the architect. Um, this, this, this plan is wasteful and creates unnecessary expenses, which is the, that is the type of thing voters will remember in eight years if this playground goes missing. Let me finish by saying, the Russell family's generous gift is intended to honor a man who was once himself a young child here during the lean thirties and forties. My impression of Jim Russell, who's been characterized as the naive, fun-loving wretch Sweeney in Patrick McManus's stories would be pressing
Miss Holland.
First for
Thank you. That's an agenda item. That's, that's enough. Thank you. Please have a seat.
Okay. Can I, can I speak then?
You just did. Thank you. Please have a seat.
Ladies and gentlemen, please don't clap. We have a forum. We gotta follow the rules.
But I didn't get my full three minutes, then I was interrupted.
Madam Clerk?
That is all for public forums.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during the public forum?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, reflecting five hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-sevenths for regular payables and seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents for payroll. Does council have any questions? Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none of it, entertain a motion, the consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Okay, consent calendar is approved. The first item under Old Business, the city's auditors from Magnuson, McHugh, and Doherty have completed their work on the city's annual audit and are here to report their findings. I will now yield the floor to Laura Paracida and Mike Webster.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. My name is Laura Paracida. Mike Webster is also on here tonight. We are with Magnuson, McHugh and Doherty, CPAs in Porta Lane, and we're part of the audit team for the city. We recently completed the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two audit. And tonight, we're just going to summarize our results and provide you with a brief overview of what we do during the audit. So I can see on a screen the question, what is an audit? So we really perform two audits to the city. One is a financial statement audit and one is a single audit. And we do perform them as an independent party, which is required that the city's auditor be independent. In a financial statement audit, we perform various tests and features to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. No audit engagement can provide total assurance, but an audit is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. During the audit, we test different things. For example, we may look at bank statements. We will look at different invoices. We really will test a variety of areas to get that reasonable assurance. And at the end of the audit, we issue an opinion. This year, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is sometimes referred to as a clean opinion. And what that means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements of the city are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The second type of audit that we do is called a single audit. And this happens when the city spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds. During this audit, we select what are called major funds and we perform testing to determine whether the, the city has stayed in compliance with the federal programs rules. So essentially, whether those funds were spent appropriately. And there are different things that we look at during that. And we also do tests over internal controls that the city has in place to monitor those funds. And we test to see whether those controls are in place and whether they're operating effectively. So for this audit, we issued essentially another clean opinion. We didn't note any non-compliance and we didn't note any deficiencies in internal control that would need to be reported. That's a very brief overview of the two audits. I, I like to mention every year that in the financial statements, before the beginning of the statement is an MDA, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is actually written by the city. And it has really great information on financial highlights. It does an overview of the statements. It will also talk about financial trends and really give the background on the financial activity during the year. So it's really helpful to read, especially if you're going to go through the financial statements. This is a very helpful look at that and what happened. We did have one major change this year in the audit, and that was the implementation of GASB eighty-seven. This is a new lease standard that the city was required to implement this year. In the past, just to give you a very brief overview, in the past, there have been two types of leases and only some were included in the financial statements. This was a big overhaul so that any lease the city has, operating leases, those are all now on the balance sheet. So you're going to see, if you look at this, there is going to be a substantial change. They're called right-of-use lease assets and lease liabilities. And really, it was to try to enhance disclosure of those lease agreements that exist. Big changes also to the footnotes. And we had some prior period adjustments because this was required to be adopted retrospectively. So to show the change in prior years as well. Other than that, I won't go into any details unless there are questions, but I will say the audit went very smoothly. The city's management does an excellent job of providing us with information that we need, answering any questions that we have. And because of that, we didn't have any material adjustments or corrections to the financial statements. And we really appreciate that each year. I believe Sarah will talk about some financial aspects as well, but we're here if anybody has any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Nope.
No, no questions. Thank you. All right. Appreciate that presentation. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have City Finance Director Sarah Lins, who will present the treasurer's quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Good evening. I wrapped the quarterly report into the audit presentation here. So one is a new this year with a new platform, so I wanted to quickly again show you. It's similar to what you saw last week or last time that we went over the first quarter report. But this is a little bit different, and this is underneath the fund summaries here. The and I'm just going to show you one of the funds here, how you can look at it and go through it at a much in more depth. So you have a summary here of the actual revenues to expenses. And then you also like have revenues by source and it breaks it down. You're able to click on things and dig into things and more. The overview I wanted to give is the, for the expenditures across all the funds, every, every fund was under, besides a debt service fund, and that was paying off to loans early, two of our debt loans for the the water fund early. What was, it went through councils. That was all approved. And then also the bid, the Business Improvement District Fund was closed out. That was the write-off of some uncollectible accounts that we had that was written off. So that one actually will be closed this year and for future go-forward. On the revenue side of things, the major fund, all the, all the funds came in as expected. The one fund that came in over was the Park Improvement Fund with the large donation that came in. One fund that was over revenue budgeted, which was a good thing. So other than that, you can go through all of the different funds here. The normal graphs that I give at the end, normally during the quarterly report presentation, you can find at the very end of each of these funds, scroll way down, you can see these right here, all these graphs I normally give. I'm not going to go through them one by one. Again, if you have detailed questions, want to dig into anything and have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me or my team and we can answer any of them, so.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Counsel, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just have a comment. Sarah, thank you to you and your team. A clean audit, no findings. It was really great. I actually read the whole thing and only look for those sentences that say there were no findings and clean. So congratulations to you and your team. You do a remarkable job.
Thank you.
Definitely. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, the final item under Old Businesses, staff will provide a report on the Traverse Park Phase One project, the James E. Russell Sports Center and Skate Park Expansion and the Phase Two Project Accessible Playground and Splash Pad, followed by two action items for James E. Russell Sports Center and Gateway Plaza, with staff seeking approval of a design services agreement with ALSC Architects to complete design and construction documents and construction manager general contractor agreement with Geno Construction for pre-construction and construction services. I'll now yield the floor to Parks and Planning Development Manager Maeve Nevins-Lavtar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. This shouldn't take too long, since we've been talking about Travers almost every meeting for the last few months. The Traverse Park renovation phase one, we have wonderful news. We have the contract now for our design team. Design team, as you may recall, is the same design team that was on the original contract. And we will conclude with ALSC Architects. This evening, we do have Reston Hall. He is the principal architect with the team. And under ALSC will be the remaining and the same professional services team with the landscape architects, Mike Terrell Landscape Architecture, who is also contracted separately to be our term contractor for the Phase Two development of the playground and the Traverse Park master plan. So we have a seamless team on that side. And then, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the other contract for consideration this evening is the Construction Management General Contractor Services and I'm pleased to announce that Geno Construction, who is a local contractor, they, they won the the bid for this. And the first part of this contract will be for pre-construction services. So what this means is it's a little bit different, but not dissimilar than the design-build process. They are hired at the beginning of this phase. We are just concluding the schematic design, so we don't have our design still. We need to flesh out the final design. We don't have height. We don't have the exact building details figured out yet, but we've been working through that design, as you know, through the last several months. And we anticipate that with Geno on board, we will, we will be able to expedite this process. And I imagine we'll be back in the next couple of months with the final design. And then at that point, once we have that final design, we'll go into and part of this contract is we will go into a negotiation with them for the guaranteed maximum price. And what that means is essentially they will go out to bid for all the subcontractors for the construction portion. And then they will present a price to us, which we will negotiate. So that is part of this contract, and it would be an amendment to this contract. Separate to that, there is a separate contract. We don't have it finalized yet, but that will be for the skate park. So the prior contract, we did have Dreamland and the Skate Park Expansion was incorporated in that last contract. and we did have Dreamland and the skate park expansion was incorporated in that last contract. We did separate them out, and that was so that they can receive a hundred percent of the allocated funds. So Dreamland will be coming forth next at the next council meeting with their contract. There was some travel, and that's why they're not while while we're not bringing that forward tonight, but we're very close with our contract on that one. So again, they were part of the original contract, and we also pick up with them where we left off. So if you recall, we had a meeting last fall with the community for the skate park design. So you can expect to see a public meeting coming up in April, and I'll be making an announcement about that exact date and time and location to talk about the skate park. And then to get into where we are with the master plan, the last time that I presented to you, we were just about to go to Boise to present for the land water conservation grant, and that was specifically for the Phase Two of this project. And Phase Two is focused on the playground. We we did receive feedback from both council, mayor, and the community as to what the original scope should be. And so we decided based on the feedback and looking at the grant language and what was most feasible, it seemed like the best approach to focus the entire grant ask on the playground portion of the of the ask. And to be very clear, the existing playground that we have, not only is it outdated, but the equipment is failing. We we did have a rope climber that failed this year. The surfacing is no longer considered ADA accessible for people, particularly with mobility disabilities. But if you look at any one of our parks in our city, none of them have uniform surfacing, and the current standard of inclusivity is uniform surfacing. That means a solid surface all the way through. And if you can imagine being a caretaker or someone with a mobility device and trying to chase a toddler around, and you put your your well, your crutch, or if you put your cane into a wood fiber surface or into a sand surface, it's not uniform. So it will be very difficult to react and to also integrate and play with that child. So that's why we no longer in the industry use non-uniform surfacing for an accessible inclusive playground. This new playground is going to be fully accessible, ADA accessible, but it's also going to be inclusive. And the term inclusive doesn't just mean mobility disabilities. It takes into account all abilities or all superpowers, as I like to describe them as. And in fact, only a small percentage of people with disabilities, particularly children, I believe the number is around four percent, have a mobility disability. The majority of the spectrum of disabilities is actually invisible. They can be cognitive such as autism, ADD, ADHD, all those various ones, sensory disorders. There are so many that you don't know about. For example, did you know that I'm deaf a hundred percent in my left ear? And if it wasn't for the prosthetic that I just had put in, you may not know that I couldn't hear you just a few months ago. So that's a perfect example of what is an invisible disability. So this playground is really exciting because it is going to have a splash pad, and it's going to be brought to the front of the new building. So it's going to be fully integrated into the landscape, and we are in the very high level preliminary design stage. This is just concept. The next step that we're going to do is we're going to move into our community engagement portion of this, where we're going to be working with various community members, particularly families and families with disabilities or superpowers and all ages. So this playground is, in my mind, not just for children. It's for people of all ages. You heard my spiel about playgrounds being for intergenerational and for everybody. And no longer is this just a playground. This is actually the front door to Traverse Park. It's going to serve as an outdoor classroom. It will serve as a plaza. It's going to be something for everyone within this playground and this splash pad. The current theme that we have right now is based on the stories that we heard from the the community. And so you will all see yourselves reflected in this playground. This playground is about Sandpoint and the people of Sandpoint. It's about the ecology and the water and the water coming down from the mountains that we can see in the foreground and flowing through the site. The splash pad will flow right into the landscape, and because our team, our design team, is the same team on the building and the plaza, that playground will actually flow right into the entrance plaza. It will be revealed in the stormwater treatment area, and then it will continue to flow through the landscape as a sort of a stream that flows through on to the east side of the park and through the skate park. So the entire front side, that entire area is going to be seamlessly integrated. What you see on the screen is the the layout that we were modeling for our cost estimating for the grant. And you can also see the sculptures that were donated as well as the funds for the Phase One renovation. I do believe I saw Mr. Russell on the screen. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Russell. As a reminder, he is the funder. His family is the generous funders of the tennis and pickleball court facility, the James E. Russell Sports Center, and that will be located just to the east. And as I mentioned previously in our last meeting, the existing courts are going to remain. So up here is the updated master plan for Traverse Park. We just completed this and you can see where the playground is going to go in proximity. I should also add that with that playground, the existing playground of the elements that we can recycle and reuse in this playground, we have already been working with our landscape architects and our engineers on what of those pieces that we can reuse. So we, just as Rebecca had mentioned, we fully intend to reuse what we can. And you will see that again in this park, if not others as well throughout town. So that is essentially it. And I do believe some of my teammates may be here. I don't see them on the screen right now, but we did have ALSC principal with us as well as Geno was with us as well. So if anyone has any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Maeve, you'd said something about a workshop and public engagement. Can you tell us a little more about that?
Yes, absolutely. So the estimated timeline for this project, we're hoping to be able to build it in twenty twenty-four. I'm hoping we know if we get the grant in spring. She didn't. They didn't. The state didn't tell us the exact time. But the process is it gets reviewed by the state first, and we did just go down to Boise and present the project to the state. And then from there, if we get selected, it will move on to the federal to the feds for their approval. Through that federal process, they have to do the all all of their reviews of the we are. We have an advantage because it's the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, and that that funding actually funded this park originally back in nineteen eighty-six. So I think that they should pick us, but I can't guarantee. If that's the case, they're tentatively saying that we will get the funds this fall. However, it's the feds. They have a lot going on, as we know. So there's no guarantee, and no one can tell me for sure when that money will be released. So in the intermediary, as soon as I get the sort of the green light or the intermediate green light from the state, I'm going to move ahead into that design period. And so I'm anticipating it will probably start around July, August, as soon as we can get the team out on the site. I'd really like to work on an inclusivity workshop. I, as you know, I'm an expert in that area, and I bring to Sandpoint my expertise from my previous job. And I I can see us doing some specific training around inclusive playgrounds and inclusive public spaces. And I've been working with my network of educators here in the community, and I will continue to work with a broader network of occupational therapists and physical therapists on what what equipment is available and how we can run that workshop. In addition, I do have I have a network of people that have been talking to me, and I've been talking to them through onsite visits. And I have a family, particularly I have a mother who she is paralyzed and her, and she's in a mobility device, a wheelchair, and her toddler and her husband are able-bodied. So she is going to be one of my prime spokespeople. In addition, we just sent out a survey, and I had a couple of people who did respond that were in mobility. They they checked the box there and wheelchairs specifically. So I'm hoping to reach out to everyone that I possibly can to have those conversations and also to the seniors that are in that area, because I think access for them is going to be very important. They'll be using the park at different times of the day. So.
I totally understand your timeframe here. What would that look like in terms of communication to the public? How do we communicate through the public? Is this something on that goes into the Daily Bee, that goes onto the Facebook page, the website?
Yeah, that's a great question. So typically I schedule the meetings two weeks or more in advance. For this particular project, I already have a webpage set up. I just need to launch it publicly. And you can subscribe to that page. And that page, essentially, every time I post an update, it will have my calendar on it. And it will notify that whoever signs up, it will directly notify to them. In addition, we utilize our social media. So we do have the City of Sandpoint Facebook. We also have the City of Sandpoint has a Parks and Recreation news blast that we put out, and we reach over, I think, is it about four thousand people that we have on our list just through emails. And for this park, I'm I'm a very grassroots on the boots-on-the-ground kind of person. So if you haven't met me in the park yet, when I first came here, we did the walking tours, and that's how I learned about a lot of these projects. So and that's how I met Rebecca for the first time. We were doing walking, walk and talk types of workshops at the park, and the target is to do that in the summertime when the weather is better, and we can really analyze what's working and what isn't working. And then also really hone in on what this equipment is and the spatial proximity of it and all of that great stuff. So let's see here. We will notify people through the newspaper as well. And I'm trying to think if there's any other outlets, our website, news. Yep, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I do want to clarify, you have two resolutions for the two contracts.
Yes. First, let's invite members of the public if they want to comment on this issue, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Nancy Hastings.
Good evening, council members. I'm Nancy Hastings, and I am a city resident. I'm also a very close neighbor of Traverse Park. I think it's appropriate that we are here to celebrate children this week, and as you had tried to salute, I asked the council and the mayor to not only just give lip service to this, but also to invest in our area children with time and service. My main concern is voting forward tonight with this large thirty-five thousand square foot building to be erected without clear timeline or funding for the new children's playground and the splash pad and the whole rest of the park being done. Over sixty percent of your surveys have reflected that most of the park is or park users are for playground and walkers and bikers. I've requested several times in writing and directly with council members and park staff to pledge to commit twenty percent of the prime time of the Russell Courts for free use by the youth from three to four P M preferred free use for the from five to seven P M preferred free use and reservations by the city citizens. These are the citizens who paid for that land to build this pay-per-play court that you're putting up. And it will take up twenty percent of the land, so twenty percent of this time that you're going to put into this pay-per-play facility should be set aside for free use by teens and youth so we can really celebrate youth and invest in them. The teen center is in dire need of a meeting place. And I see that there is a little meeting area. And so let's again not do lip service, but commit in writing in the management plan that's supposed to be coming forward through the some consultant, some from very far away, is supposed to be taking care of this management plan of the building. So I will ask you to commit today to put a hold and not vote forward the construction of this plant, this building, until you have these other vital points ready and a timeline and a firm transparency of what is going to happen with that building and the uses and the people who are going to be allowed in there. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Madam Clerk.
Rebecca Holland.
I'm sorry, I did not see that there was an agenda item about the playground. So it was I thought it was just about the architectural thing, whatever. Don't start my time yet. Oh, well, here we go. Okay, because I do have something on the playground, but on the location, counsel, you're being asked to approve an architectural contract to produce drawings and specs for a very large thirty-five thousand square foot building to be built at Traverse Park. The issue is location, location, location. It was clear from the rollout that the Russell family's generous donation was a total surprise to counsel and to the rest of us. And Administrator Stapleton's unveiling to the public of the chosen location for this building over existing sport was surprised to us. Then Planning Department revised the plan to restore the tennis courts, which is an up, but tear down the city's only ADA inclusive playset with its ADA access picnic shelter. That's a down to build this acre-sized building that will dominate and shadow existing open play space. I ask you, where what where has there been any serious public involvement in choosing the location? Our Parks and Recreation Master Plan specifically states, quotes, quotes, existing playground structure will remain with a new splash pad proposed. Thank you, Shelby, for getting that back on board. And the master plan states the importance of open space by quote, master plan says, preserve the northerly view. So how is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar taxpayer-funded master plan so easily ignored ignored in two years? A decision for placement of the sports complex within the eighteen acres of Traverse Park, don't go away on me. Traverse Park needs to involve the whole community with a real workshop scheduled and a city survey specifically to the building's location. The questions shouldn't be asked first about community members getting punch cards or getting maintenance for the maintenance cost is what I saw. So I ask you tonight to please table this contract and instruct the staff to schedule a council meeting workshop and a city survey for the community's location preference. Take the time to do this right. Please don't rubber stamp this contract. I can promise you, this is the type of decision that voters in eight months will be weighing heavily. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Molly McCann.
Hello again. I'm sorry, I also didn't see this on the agenda. I didn't know that there was going to be a playground discussion. So just off the cuff, to me, it feels backwards that we're going to go out to the community and find out about ADA accessible and the interest in the playground after after you've decided to move it. Seems like we should have found out if the community supports the playground as is where it is now, and then and then decided where the building should go or if it should be moved. And then the other thing is, you know, what happens if this grant doesn't come through? Is there a backup plan? The playground will be gone. So what happens in the meantime? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. Madam Clerk.
No one else has signed up to speak on this matter, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then oh, maybe one more on the playground. And just a reminder to those on Zoom, now would be your time to raise your hand if you want to speak on this agenda item.
Tyler Key.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I just have a question on the proposed splash pad new playground budget. Do we know what the budget is for this?
It's about a million.
So it's a million dollars. And has any cost benchmarking been done on equivalent projects?
Yes.
And where are we?
Well, we don't normally do a back and forth here at the dais, but Maeve, do you want to, can you address comparatives on, she's familiar with the budget. She put the budget together for this project. We'll be sure to address your question in the deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Not not to put Maeve on. Not, not to put Maeve on the spot, she's doing a fantastic job and I appreciate working with her.
She sure is.
But just curious, I want to keep it in consideration.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, um, I would entertain a motion. Well, let's, let's start with, uh, some deliberation first. Uh, I know that the budget that you put together, Maeve, there was a question, of course. Budget's a little over, I think it's like one point.
One point, one, two. Is the budget we have allocated, um, but a little over five million out of our budget is a fifty percent matching ask. Um, so the grant would be about five hundred. Our plan for development is of. A phased development if we don't receive the grant, um. Essentially, the, my understanding from the, um, team is that we could build the majority of the playground, but the. Um, swings and the swing bay is a sizable footprint. And with the safety surfacing and the type of servants that we would desire, um, that is. The portion that would most likely be cut if we didn't receive the funding. Um, I'm not saying that that's a half million dollar swing area, but, um, we would look at it strategically. Yeah.
Okay, and another comment that I can make on the budget, when we receive federal grants, they come. With significant strings attached that drive up the cost considerably, um, as much as thirty-five percent, so.
Yes, you're correct. And particularly with this one, you have to buy America and that means all of the playground equipment, the steel, everything. Has to be from America, which is challenging for a lot of the playground equipment, particularly steel, as you know, is basically imported. Um, so, but fortunately, I've been in industry for a long time and there's, there, we have great sources locally and. Um, in the lower forty-eight, as we call it, so I think we'll be all right.
As well as Davis Bacon wages and, um. Um, other requirements, uh, set forth in the grant that, that drives up costs.
One other that might help, uh, answer Tyler's question. The, there is this cost matrix that's an industry standard and, um, I believe it is that for every. For the population of people under eighteen, um, in our, in our population demographic, we have about twenty-eight hundred. We should be spending between one to two thousand dollars on play park equipment for that demographic age group. Um, so we are far underserved and we haven't updated our equipment. Um, to the level of service to meet the needs, um, to the point that. There, if you've heard of the UCAN gym and other places, we do not have a place. In the city that meets the needs of our, um, community for the special needs community. So this playground will actually most likely turn into a place where the therapists will bring their clients. And they'll be doing, um, therapy here as well. So it's not just a playground. It's, it will serve many, many needs.
Okay, thank you.
Your mayor.
Yeah.
For clarification, for the record, our budget, we have five hundred thousand, not five million. Was allocated specifically for playgrounds and updates that are needed. Uh, from when Maeve originally started here and did an assessment of our playgrounds, looking at accessibility ADA issues and. Then we've got failing equipment here and in other parts that have, um, been dangerous. We've had to remove elements of playground equipment.
Thank you.
Counsel, and any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, question for you, Maeve. What, in the industry, what is the typical lifespan of a playground, piece of playground equipment? Um, I think our current structure is thirteen years old, if I'm not mistaken. Is there kind of an industry standard for, for, for maintenance or replacement of playground equipment?
Yes, the typical industry standard is ten years. That's, um, you're, you're lucky if you can get a piece of equipment to last for ten years. Um, most often you can get a longer lifespan if you can maintain it. Um, our equipment is, the posts are structurally sound, however, they were installed. Direct, directly into one solid, um, foundation pore. And that's not how, how they're done anymore. I don't know what the specs were back then, but, um. If we were to reuse each of those poles, we would essentially have to replace each member or cut them off and reuse it. And they won't be, the warranty will be void at that point and they will not, the manufacturer will not, um, support it from a safety perspective. Um, it's sort of like a fence pole. Fence pole has to go into the ground a certain depth. So if we were to cut it off at its base, it will no longer have its structural. Support, so the height, the total height will not be effective anymore. However, a lot of the members of the existing structure on the upper platform do appear to be in, um, a good state. So we're pretty confident we can reuse those, which will be great, as well as like the slides and some of the swing features. Um, but for the most part, the main timber structure, or not timbers, the steel poles are not going to be able to use. And we've already had an incident with the rope structure. Um, the rope structure failed and, um, it's the rope manufacturer, um. No longer makes their ropes that way anymore. So there's been a lot of changes. The playground industry is moving. Like tech industry, they're moving so fast and the innovation is there. Um, even ten years ago, we didn't know about all the various disabilities and abilities that were integrated. And if you remember, when that playground was built, it was built with a ramp structure. Um, our playground that we're proposing is all at the same grade with. Uh, an elevated platform that would have the Sandpoint House and the Bear and the Addit. Um, the reason that we're looking at that is we would be able to use the fill, we'd be able to save costs by using some of the fill. That would be taken out of the site and building amount. So, um, yeah, that answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor. I heard some concerns about, uh, pay to play. Um, will there be a workshop or? Something of that sort to discuss how it will be used, the facility, if you don't mind speaking to that.
There have been a few community workshops, um, with users, um, talking about the facility, um, and. Then there was also the community survey as referenced, and that was to also help inform the development of an operations plan. Um, we'll get back underway with that with kind of this, um, picking off again of the design. And so there's been no decisions made as to. Who's paying, when they're paying, how they're paying. Uh, the survey was about trying to gather that information. We do have pay to play. Across all of our parks, um, as council is aware, so at our, um, at our various marinas, people pay for mortgage. They pay for visitor spots. Um, we do have our picnic shelters, you reserve the picnic shelters, groups, instructors who are using our outdoor courts and facilities. They do pay to reserve those outdoor courts and facilities. But we also have programming that's our general parks and recreation programming. And some of those things are classes where we're charging for, and sometimes it is open time that we have to the community. I don't anticipate that we'll have anything different with this facility. It's going to be the balance of all of those things. So. The survey was meant to, uh, really inform the development of those efforts. And ultimately, it will be a council decision as to what that balance is. The challenge is we're moving forward, figuring out that operation is the demand for use of this facility. And the hours for the court sports, which is what it's dedicated for, and the purpose was for. It's getting that right balance between our various different court sports, the many leagues that we have in town and things like that, but. That will be a balance and will, and probably come to council in the next four to six months.
Thank you. Great question. Um, any other questions?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, maybe this is for Jennifer as well. We heard some comment about, we, we understand the user groups, the pickleball bicyclists, those going to the. Uh, jungle gym. Um, we also heard the teen center as a nonprofit. Have we heard from any other nonprofits about use of the facility specifically? Besides the teen center.
Haven't specifically heard from other nonprofits. Our specs for the facility were to include a. Community room that could hold up to fifty people with the purpose. Being that that could be for general community activities. Um, so when there are tournaments in the facility, there's that room to accommodate tournaments if they want to reserve that space. If there's community meetings, it was really trying to take advantage of this opportunity for. That unfilled need that we have and was identified in our Parks and Rec survey about indoor facilities for the community. So. Uh, it's meant to be a general purpose community room, could be birthday parties. Uh, in the winter months could be a number of things, but things that would otherwise be occurring outdoor in our parks that there is indoor space that people can use. So year round, again, there's more utilization of our park.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Mr. Mayor, Jennifer, if you could remind me as to why this location was picked. I do think that if I recall, Mr. Russell was an avid tennis player and that was in relation to some of the decision making in this.
I will, I will kick this ultimately to Maeve to, to fill in with, um, any information that I guess with this, but a reminder that. Um, in the Traverse Park master plan, the concept for Traverse Park. It did identify an indoor court sport facility at Traverse Park. Um, and through that process, it was consolidating, uh, our court sports. And, um, what we heard from the community is we were moving forward with further design and implementation. Is that the community wanted to keep, um, outdoor court sports in other parks as well. So we're not consolidating, eliminating tennis courts at Traverse, or at Lakeview, excuse me. We're not eliminating those at City Beach. And during that time, we had also, um, worked with the pickleball group and added the pickleball courts there behind more memorial field. It was an assessment as we were in the design build process about where to locate this facility. And it was through community workshops and user group workshops where we got feedback. About the concern about putting it on top of the existing courts. That that would have negative impacts to some of the user groups and most particularly, um, to our high school tennis program. And so there was a strong desire by the tennis community that, uh, this be located. In another area of the park where they could retain the outdoor courts. What we heard from many was those are the best of all of our outdoor courts. Likewise, there was a feeling by the tennis community that even though we were adding, uh, four courts. If they're losing for outdoor courts, there was no added gain for the tennis community. And in fact, it's a loss. Because then they would be sharing those four courts with pickleball because it is a shared use facility. So. Uh, that is what we heard from, from the tennis community. We had heard from the neighbors. About the concerns of the proximity of the building to the neighborhood, that it would shadow backyards and things. So what we heard when we had our last workshop, uh, was that. The majority of the neighbors preferred the other location that moved the building away from just sitting right at their backyards. The other location that was considered was, um, over, uh, to be further to the west. And, um, the problem with that site is that site was considered to, again, best preserve. Park views, but the challenge with that particular site is now we displaced softball at that site. So it was balancing all of these things and with the least impact to users. Um, the benefits to the court community, hearing the neighborhood input. The site where we ultimately landed on, number one, did you go check? Also said that was the best site. It would be the cheapest site to build on. We knew it would impact the playground, but it was originally the plan. Before we started looking at leveraging other funds, what we could do with our budget for playgrounds. Is we would relocate the existing playground to, to next to the facility. So in answer to the question of what if we don't get the grant? The, the answer is without the grant, we would look at a lesser project, would not include a splash pad because we don't currently have funding. We would relocate the existing playground up next to the facility and, and with our. Our current budget for playgrounds to do some improvements. You would not see, um, the, the breadth of improvements. That are suggested if we can leverage this grant funding. So. I think I've covered everything with, and a reminder, and Maeve will say this, um, that Traverse Park was a dump site. And so, uh, we have real challenges as we start to look at foundations and where we're putting things. Um, because cost to build and impacts because of the fact it was a dump site. We are not on the dump site at this specific location.
Three major things. You did a great job. Yes.
But I appreciate you balancing all of that and explaining that very clearly. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Well, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the agreement with ALSC Architects for Travis Park Renovations Phase One Professional Design Services. City Agreement Number A two, three dash five, three, zero, zero, dash, three. Is there a motion? Seconded and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Motion passes and now entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the agreement with Geno Construction Company for Traverse Park Renovations Phase One. CMGC Services City Agreement Number Two, Three, Dash Five, Three, Zero, Zero, Dash Five. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now prepare to move on to the final item on this evening's agenda, which will be an informational workshop with city staff and consultants. Providing information for discussion with the mayor and council on the long-term east-west connection. Contained in the adopted multimodal transportation master plan. And the proposed amendment originally presented to council at its February first, two thousand twenty-three meeting. We offered the public an opportunity to submit written questions in advance of this meeting. The questions received were consolidated and forwarded to staff to ensure they are addressed during this evening's presentation. I have in the front of me a summary of those questions. Following the presentation, I will take another look. To ensure they were all, all addressed as a reminder. And for those who have come into the room more recently, if you've not already submitted a question and would wish to do so for this agenda item. Please complete a form which is available on the table by the front door. Hand it to Chief Kuhn, who's walking around. Still walking around, just reminding people, he, he'll pick up your form if you, uh, if you still, if you want to submit a question and haven't yet. And of course, if you're on Zoom and you have a question for the workshop that you did not already submit previously, you may email your question at this time. To city clerk at sandpointidaho.gov. And that's Sandpoint Idaho spelled out. So it's city clerk at sandpointidaho.gov. Staff is monitoring that account during the meetings. So at this time, uh, we will take a brief recess of five minutes to let everyone refresh and then we will reconvene. At approximately six forty-two. Okay, we will now continue with the informational workshop. Just as a, uh, note, there was a question earlier about, uh, why, why an informational workshop for this, uh, particular topic? Um, as you will soon, um, discover, as we have all discovered. Um, this is an incredibly complex topic that has been underway for roughly fifteen years. Um, there's a tremendous amount of history, a tremendous amount of data, a tremendous amount of information. Um, a tremendous amount of public input that has already gone into this process to get us where we are here today. And, um, and it's really important that all of us understand, certainly all of us up here at the dais understand. Um, the breadth of what we are contemplating, the breadth of what we understand as the, um. As, uh. What's in the multimodal transportation plan. Uh, it's, it's been an cumulative effort over many years. So. Um, so that's the purpose of this. We, we need to, if we're going to make an educated, uh, decision on this moving forward. We need to start from a common understanding and that's why we are here today. So. Um, I will, I would like to note once again, there is a, an additional opportunity for public comment on this. Um, well, first of all, I remind everyone, if you haven't, if there's anyone new in the room, you can fill out a, uh, a question or a public comment. Card, uh, there's a sheet at the front table by the door. You can hand it to the chief or to city staff up front here. Um, and we can get your question answered. There will also be an additional opportunity for public comment. When the proposed amendment is presented to council for consideration at their May third, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. And that will be a, a standard, uh, public comment, uh, process. At this time, I will yield the floor to Infrastructure Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson. Take it away, Amanda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Can you hear me okay? Excellent, and good evening to everyone in the public. It's really great to see so many people in attendance tonight. We'll get going here. So as the mayor mentioned, really the purpose of this. We'll get going here. So as the mayor mentions, really the purpose of this uh presentation this evening, and it is a long one, I will note. Is to enhance understanding regarding uh figure twenty-three, which is that east-west connection, specifically the long-term plan. It's a concept included in the city's adopted multimodal transportation plan, one I'm sure pretty much everyone in the room uh has seen. The agenda this evening is broken out into really four different categories, followed by questions and answers at the end. Those four categories are going to be uh split up as follows. The first part will be regarding the context of the master plan. So how we got to this master plan, what it includes. And what it doesn't include, as well as a brief history on US two. The mayor mentioned it's been a long time coming over the last fifteen plus years of planning for that corridor. So we're gonna. Make sure we have a common understanding as far as the history goes. And then we're also going to do a little bit of a deep dive into the more technical data and simulations as well. So simulations are looking at. How vehicles are actually moving through our jurisdiction uh based upon volume of traffic. So we'll get into that. It's a little bit like a video game. So hopefully that'll be uh of interest to folks. And then last but certainly not least, we'll take a deeper dive into that long-term east-west connection and hopefully bring it all uh home. Before we take a dive into the master plan itself, I wanted to give an explanation as to where the master plan fits into the overall aspect of planning. So we do a lot of plans at the city and it's not unique to the city of Sandpoint. Uh, all jurisdictions are following a a similar process. So this image is intended to reflect. That we take values from the community and we turn those into priorities and from priorities, we get into planning and finally into implementation. So each of our projects is somewhere in one of those various phases, and it begins with the strategic plan. We talk a lot about the comprehensive plan and then we dive into our master plans. Those master plans then feed into a capital improvement plan, which is typically a six-year window. And then ultimately get into annual budgets and projects where we're starting to approve contracts for design services and construction services. As noted there in the yellow, as many of you in the room know, our comprehensive plan is currently being updated. It was adopted in two thousand and nine and we are actively seeking public engagement for that effort. This is a quick snapshot of our strategic plan, which we previously went to the public and city council with in great detail. So I won't read the slide to you, but wanted you to have a glimpse as to its reference. As I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, how that fits in is it's really a twenty-year vision. By and for the community and fundamentally, it helps shape our major decisions as to where and how the city may grow. On the right-hand side there, it notes why we do a comprehensive plan. And I'll let you just take a moment to read that.
Excuse me, Amanda?
Yes?
Um, can you um show us just your slideshow view? We're seeing your whole computer screen. I think it's a little busy.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Might just be me, but.
Appreciate. No, I had intended to show the slideshow. So thank you.
Always do. So thank you.
Let's see if I can catch up with myself there. I really appreciate you pausing me. Okay, I think we're back on track. So what is multimodal? Our multimodal transportation master plan, the use of the word multimodal, as many of you are aware, is really about all users. So simply put, it relates to the many ways in which people travel through the community. That includes pedestrians, bicycles. Motorist freight deliveries as well as riding transit. Our multimodal plan, while it doesn't state it there, also talks about watercraft and that that's a use within um our area as well, which is pretty unique and. The city's complete streets and the yellow there on the right-hand side, our complete streets policy. That uh city council put into place via resolution in two thousand and eleven actually requires that we consider all users. So it's not just at a a planning level from a master plan perspective. It's actually a policy that um the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee really helped to uh move forward and solidify with city council. So on the right-hand side, I want to take a second to introduce um our team on this multimodal transportation ma- master planning effort. Uh, OTAC was the lead consultant and they partnered with Farron Pierce, which is a transportation planning consultant. Uh, based in Utah. And in the room this evening, we have Preston Stinger. He is a professional transportation planner. And we're kind of backwards this evening. Preston's normally with us online and I'm there in person. We're switched. I'm currently at a a conference here in Seattle about. Uh wastewater and implementing those projects um to replace our wastewater plant. That said, Preston has been involved in our planning efforts related to transportation for um. Going on two and a half years now and uh he continues to be involved in our reviews of private development. At our February first meeting, I uh gave a pretty lengthy introduction to Preston. So I won't do that, but I wanted you to know he's in the room this evening, sitting next to Jennifer. And will be uh providing about half of this presentation with me. So we're going to bounce back and forth between the two of us. So the overview of the intent with the multimodal plan is that it's really taking a look. At all the information and culminating it into a single plan. So that includes past plans. It includes analysis, community and stakeholder input as well as data. And then the resulting strategies of how we're going to move forward over the next twenty years. And again, it's a multimodal plan. Sometimes the use of the word multimodal, uh people think that that means pedestrians and bicycles, but multimodal again means all users. What's in the multimodal plan? The contents that are listed on the left-hand side of the screen there are true for pretty much all of our master plans. We typically have a summary at the beginning. We talk about the process uh that includes the public engagement as well as what information went into the planning document. We usually do vision and goals. The uh goals feed the objectives. So the goals are what and the objectives are how we want to accomplish uh the priorities and the vision of the community. And then number four, existing conditions and analysis that starts to get into the technical component of the plan. And then that moves forward usually into some select concept solutions. So we don't provide necessarily a concept for everything that's included in the plan. But definitely those areas where we've heard the most amount of concerns and desires for solutions. And then we have an overarching capital improvement plan, which is again looking at a twenty-year horizon. And then last but not least, how may we go about funding some of these different projects? Overall, the planning process uh is in this slide is true to all of our planning efforts. Uh, regardless of if it's transportation or arts and culture or parks and recreation, we begin with public input. And actually, before we have a conversation with anyone, we actually start with reading and having our consultants read and understand what the public previously said. So we have a lot of prior plans that a significant amount of public engagement went into. And taking that input and recognizing how it may still be relevant today. So that's the first box that you see there. And then moving forward, what does the public say about our current conditions and what is the existing data that we have to come uh forward through this planning effort? So then in moving forward to your right, uh, the public input continues when we start to engage on what are the concerns from the public? What are the issues that they're most concerned about and what are the solutions that they would like to see move forward? So we take all of that information and our consultant team moves forward with uh doing an analysis on, we know what today is now. What do we think the future is going to look like from a data perspective? And then moving that forward to, okay, given what we know from the community, what the data is telling us, what are some technical solutions that could contribute to these concerns? And then we go back to the community and we ask, what do you think of these potential solutions and these technical solutions? And we take that feedback. And then we incorporate it into the final request for an adoption of a plan. So what planning efforts went into this multimodal uh plan specifically? We have here a slide from our pulled directly from our multimodal transportation plan, and it's just an overall image of uh what's actually articulated in a number of pages within the plan. Um, it's a an image showing that we started the engagement in the fall of twenty nineteen. Until ultimately it was adopted in the spring of twenty twenty-one. On the bottom of the screen, you can see the various types of engagement efforts that occurred throughout the process. So we had public engagement events. This the this slide does not list all of them. It merely is highlighting some of the key uh. Series that went throughout the process. So that includes the public survey that went out um initially. And we also had a series of workshops uh in February of twenty twenty. We went to the keg pole and had a booth at the keg pole in twenty twenty. We also did a pedestrian priority network workshop session. And a variety of public meetings in February of twenty-one. We had multiple presentations to city council. We had a few presentations to planning and zoning as well. And then those blue dots are representing uh steering committee and coordination teams. The blue dots represent what we've historically primarily focused on, which is having a steering committee through a planning process that really helps see that planning process throughout. So they're engaged right at the beginning and they're reviewing the document at every one of those really critical milestones. And so. While we had steering committees on this particular uh planning effort, we intended very strategically to broaden the input by having additional workshops. And I have a few more slides on that. I'll show you this evening. So who was involved? Uh, there's a lot more people that were involved than are represented on this slide, but I wanted to just take. A moment to note that we did have an agency coordination team. So that included uh ten individuals from various agencies, as you would expect, ITD. Bonner County Road and Bridge, the school district, the railroad, um the airport spot, of course, and then the independent highway district. And then we also had another fifteen individuals that were invited to attend right from the beginning. Uh, called our community steering team. So each one of these individuals brought a different element to the table and a different perspective. And then, as I noted earlier, these two teams. Were engaged throughout the process. However, we also had other specific invites and more focus groups. So we had an effort that we'll talk a little bit about called the TrenLab Plus, which is looking at what do we think our community is going to. Function and look like as it relates to transportation in the future, as in way in the future. How will technology impact our ways in which we move throughout our community? Will our deliveries be via air? So it was trying to get feedback from the community about where we think we'll be in the future as it relates to transportation. So we invited thirty-five individuals to attend and that included the mayor, some council members, the public, and then various business owners as well. We had a series on sidewalk network connectivity and we invited a total of twenty attendees to that workshop. Or workshops, I'm sorry, there were a couple of them. And I listed a few of the names. It doesn't represent all of them, but I know there's a couple of folks I saw in the audience that are listed there and uh. Moving forward, we also had a trucking focus group. So Lighthouse hosted a meeting. With those individuals listed there to really focus on how trucks function through town and get their feedback specifically. So it was a pretty. Broad spectrum of individuals that participated throughout the process. Uh, a lot of this was available online. Uh, we also had uh two teams. Uh, I'll move forward to my next slide here. So our invitation, this is just a snapshot from that invitation to uh engage the uh coordination team and what we were asking them to provide input on. This was the slide I was thinking was next. So in addition to those uh two teams that we noted were engaged throughout the process. It was really important and I commend our consultants for focusing on the perspective of youth. Uh, we also heard that from council when we launched this effort to. Uh, not just focus on um adults, but what do our youth think about our transportation system? How are they using it? What do they think about the future? So I know our consultants really enjoyed that effort as well. So what did we do specific to the east-west connection concept? How did we inform the community about this potential concept? I, the answer is in a number of ways. So we kicked it off uh. Actually, starting with the short-term solution, which is figure twenty-two in the plan with an online workshop on January twenty-eighth. We also had a really deep dive into this exact figure that's in front of you on February eleventh of twenty-one. Again, that was available online for anyone to participate in. We had a variety of social media and network newspaper coverage. The mayor's roundtable articles, as I mentioned earlier, the committee meetings, as well as presentations at planning and zoning and two city council presentations prior to adoption. Very much appreciate all of the coverage within the reader. Uh, they did a great job of notifying everyone and assisting us with that, that they could participate in a conversation about the east-west. Uh, so part one there that's noted uh was scheduled to cover the east-west connection on January twenty-eighth. That's when we kicked it off. It was a three-part series of a workshop. And while that was the effort uh related to the east-west connection uh prior to adoption, the engagement hasn't stopped. Uh, we just in twenty twenty-two have picked the conversation back up as we notified city council uh in receiving a grant for an update to the urban area transportation plan. That included a variety of media coverage as well as two city council presentations to date, just on kicking it off and ways in which the community can engage. We did do an online survey and then the image on the right-hand side is crazy days. This summer, it was a very hot day. Uh, actually, the board ironically that is up at Jeff Jones Square there that I'm pointing at is the east-west connection. So we had about a hundred people participate in that effort and. Had some really good conversations uh that will ultimately feed into that urban area transportation plan. Um, also very much appreciate that uh that the B uh participating in notifying the public of that engagement effort. While it wasn't a transit meeting, transit is light rail. Um, we really, I think the the public had a clear understanding that it was very much a transportation plan. This is a super fun slide. It just is highlighting all the different ways in which the B notified individuals through the eighteen-month planning process of how they could be involved in this transportation master planning effort. So. These are all specific to transportation. It totals about twelve different articles in just the B alone. A search on the reader will, you'll find a similar result of about twelve to fifteen. Uh, the summary uh of conditions and data. So moving from that conversation around what public involvement fed into the multimodal plan. Our consultants looked at a variety of data and I'm actually going to take a breath of speaking. I'm going to turn this one over to you, Preston. Can you uh just very briefly highlight each one of those uh categories and and what they are?
You bet. All right. So population trends and growth trends. So that is obviously population or people. That is increases in our population growth based on birth rates, based on move-ins and so forth. Growth trends is related to population, but it's also related to land use growth. It's related. To traffic growth and it's not a one-to-one ratio either. Population and traffic growth are not equal. But right now, what we're seeing is population growth is increasing at a higher rate than the traffic growth is, but they're pretty well aligned as far as that uh. That goes. The public survey results, uh. I know OTAC uh led that effort with the surveys and and interviewing through the survey online. Uh, how people travel, how they like to travel, where the issues they are seeing and and how often do they use certain modes of transportation and all these things helped informed uh way or improvement recommendations. The travel demand and operational analysis. So those are are two, two different things, not to get too geeky here, but there's a travel demand model that the city has. That has land use information, has population, has demographic information in there with future plans of what what we project, what the city projects, what those land use projections will be. And based on that, it then uses census data to calculate what that uh increase in traffic will be and what routes they're going to take on your street system. Uh, so that's what a overall, overall, that's what a travel man model does. That does need to be updated on a frequent basis, especially these days with how rapidly things are changing uh in the city. Operational analysis is what follows that. So after getting those projections of volumes, we then put that into a different. Traffic analysis tool that analyzes your grade level of operations at your intersections and how well those are functioning. Uh, and then simulations, uh, we, we, there's oftentimes our tools have the ability to look at simulations, so look at cars moving through the system. So we can see not just from a calculation deterministic standpoint of what those. Equations equal, but looking at with your eyes. How things are moving around and then also that's calculating behind the scenes with that delay is at your intersections. So it's nice to see both. You can see visually, but also the backend, the the data behind it. Origin destinations, that's a a way for us to tell how many people are coming in and out of town uh from where they're coming. From a geographic standpoint, how many are passing through town and not stopping, how many are passing through town and stopping and so forth. And that's coming from a data source that we. Uh, called Streetlight that we purchased the data from. It's a third-party vendor that purchases data from cell phone companies. And this, it's also called location-based services, what the data is called. Uh, where they wipe the IDs of individuals and just give us the data of of what that looks like. It's thousands of points. On a, on a map that we then analyze from a, an origin destination standpoint. And then the trim app plus uh, that Amanda introduced already. Uh, electronic pavement condition assessment. Matt, you may have to help me on that one. I'm not a pavement expert. Uh, but I'll jump to the next one, existing conditions sidewalks. Uh, which was also led by OTAC, but as evaluating our existing. Sidewalk system, where are there gaps, where, what's the condition of those sidewalks and. You know, where do we need improvements to fill those gaps and, and poor levels of sidewalk? Amanda, you want to talk about the pavement?
Absolutely. Thank you, Preston. Yeah, the electronic pavement condition assessment was a, a van actually that we contracted with. To go in and do an electronic assessment of every. Block of street in the city. So subsurface conditions all the way to surface conditions. And the purpose of that is to help us use data to inform where and how we are improving uh, our pavement. So. That information contributed to our capital improvement plan specifically. Any questions on this slide before we move on from a data perspective?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
This is.
We're going to continue on with the presentation. There were questions will be from the public will be addressed at the end.
Uh, this slide is just a summary of the uh, cellphone data that Preston had mentioned. This is an image from our master plan. So a vision statement, such an important part of a document. So we have a vision statement in our strategic plan. That feeds into as well the vision in our comprehensive plan and that feeds into the visions that are also in all of our. Uh, subsections of our master plans. So on the right-hand side, I highlighted what I think is a really. Well, the entire statement is very valuable. There's, I think, a key sentence here that's applicable to tonight's conversation, which is quality options. So having options through our various modes of travel is really critical to the economy, the livability of our community. As I mentioned earlier, the plan includes goals and they are the what? As well as a number of objectives that goes with each one of these ten goals in the plan. As we move forward with our comprehensive plan and how these two documents talk to each other. These goals go directly in that comprehensive plan. So as. Amy, our city planner, has been bringing forward the conversation of the comprehensive plan. We keep checking back on all of these goals that are included in our master plans. So this serves as the draft of the goals that are in the comprehensive plan. Specifically in the transportation chapter. So we keep checking back and forth on these. And I will say that as of at least recently, um, we're hearing that these goals still uh. Are a resounding support for these goals. And I think that they're high enough level goals that they are. Uh, consistent as we move through time. They don't really change significantly because our values fundamentally haven't really changed over the last fifteen, twenty years. We as a community, and I'm preaching to the choir to everyone in the room, we've cared a really long time about pedestrians and bicycles. As well as uh, how we have a safe environment and we care about character within our community as it relates to our transportation system. That hasn't changed. As far as important factors driving the need, why are we improving multimodal? It is true, we have a long list of pavement that needs to be uh, rehabbed and replaced, quite frankly. Uh, in fact, we're above average, uh, not in the good way, um, regarding our backlog. In the city of how much uh, pavement needs to be replaced. So in addition to pavement. Uh, there's a variety of concerns within the community uh, that need to be addressed through improvements. As well as we spoke earlier about um, the data that feeds into how we're growing as a community. So. The need for our multimodal improvements and standpoint is really looking at that growth and recognizing that we are a hub for our region. We have um, a year-round tourism. Obviously, and we are in facing failing infrastructure, just like the rest of the nation. So when it comes to being a hub for the region, what that really means is that as the county seat. Uh, we're serving a lot of communities in the area. There's a lot of folks that work in Sandpoint that maybe don't live in Sandpoint. Uh, there are communities such as Dover that are not necessarily uh, full-service cities in the aspect of having multiple restaurants and grocery stores. So they're coming to Sandpoint. Uh, for their services, as everyone in the room knows. So this is just really capturing that. Our role as a hub for the region isn't projected to change over time. And Preston, I'm going to turn this one over to you to kind of help explain how we go about achieving that goal of a balanced approach. And that not every corridor is everything to everyone, as we've said in the transportation plan, specific to those layers of the network.
You bet. So the, the kind of the standard transportation planning that we use is a layered network. Uh, methodology. So that means you have a network of your transportation, or sorry, your truck. You have a network of vehicle, vehicular, a network of your pedestrian, a network of your bicycle. Uh, and a network of your transit. So all of those layer on top of one another. That doesn't mean all of those users are using the same. Corridors to do what they need to do. They have different corridors they need to utilize. For instance, trucks. Obviously aren't going to use every corridor in the city. They have designated routes. We want to make sure that those are mostly. Hopefully not over set, not overlaying on top of heavy pedestrian or bicycle corridors. So once you lay those on top, then you have your full transportation network. The, we should probably also talk about. How a street system works. There is a kind of transportation one-on-one. There's a hierarchy of streets. And not every street serves the same purpose. We have local streets, which are kind of your neighborhood streets that have lots of access, slower speeds. And you, then you have collector streets that bridge that gap between the local and your arterials. They provide that access into your arterials. And are a good feeder system. And then you have your arterials and oftentimes you have different la, different levels of arterials. You have minor arterials or major arterials and, and sometimes called principal arterials, depending on how you want to classify it. Their arterials tend to carry more traffic and usually at a higher speed. And with less access, meaning there's less driveways hopefully on that. If there are lots of driveways, you tend to break down that system and they don't function as way they should. For a good, to have a good, healthy transportation system in your city, you need to have a mixture of all those. You can't just have a bunch of local streets or neighborhood streets. Uh, it, that doesn't serve your system. You'd end up having a clogged system in many areas. And same thing, can't have multiple arterial streets. That's not healthy to live in. Nobody wants a whole bunch of traffic on every street. Um, so a good system has a healthy mix of all of those and they don't feed off one another.
Thank you, Preston.
Yep.
So moving on through the plan to our concepts and capital improvement plan. As I mentioned earlier, a capital improvement plan is looking at a twenty-year horizon with short, mid, and long term. So what you can expect for the short term, it's typically. One to five years, midterm is usually six to ten, and then long-term is that ten to twenty-year vision. And short-term are things that feed into our next annual budget, things we're intending to implement sooner than later. The mid and long-term continue to be plans and concepts usually. As we get closer towards the end of that five-year window, we start looking at uh, design budgets for our midterm solutions. And moving those projects forward. The multimodal plan specifically includes concepts. Uh, images, if you will, cartoons for everything listed on the left-hand side there. And on page six, I just wanted to call this out because I think it's super important. Uh, it's stated in the plan multiple times because of its level of importance, and that's that the concepts are cartoons. They show generally where and how. But I really appreciate our consultants noting that it's imperative that um, we proceed with additional community engagement and engineering. To evolve these concepts. So that's why concepts change throughout time. They are initial concept. And depending on if they're in the short-term, midterm, or long-term, the level of detail varies within them as well. So key takeaways, uh, these are snapshots from the plan itself. And I just highlighted there at the bottom in the middle. Again, that the concepts provided are intended to serve as just the first step to determine what's a priority in our community. And to move forward uh, as we uh, go about that planning effort. As a guide for future community engagement and engineering, meaning it's the start of the conversation, not by any means the end. It also notes that the uh, capital improvement plan totaled about a hundred million dollars into, in today's dollars, which today was in twenty twenty-one. When this plan was adopted. So we have a lot of needs in our community and it is very challenging to balance those needs. And also obviously to find funding for all of them. Um, I really appreciate that one of the key takeaways was again, that complete streets policy. It is appendix B. Uh, the complete resolution is appendix B in the multimodal plan. Just solidifying again that safe and convenient travel for all users is really important. Um, and I again appreciate that it still holds true today, even though it was adopted uh, over ten years ago. Before adopting the transportation plan, we had a series of workshops to do exactly what we're doing tonight uh, on every single concept. So. The presentation that you're seeing tonight is an effort to take all of those workshops that we had and consolidate them into a fifty-nine slide. Of a presentation. Uh, we posted on our website, access to all of the uh, planning documents. You could participate online in providing input at each one of those presentations at city council and tell council your feedback. Um, as community members to those concepts as well as the contents overall. So that was uh, on our website as a snapshot there and then uh, it wasn't ultimately adopted until May fifth of twenty twenty-one. So as a summary, uh, city council again adopted this in May. And it serves as our only city transportation planning document that's actually supported by substantial data. So all other prior documents are purely or primarily based upon community input, which is huge and essential to the process. At the beginning of the presentation, we talked about that overarching process of planning. So it is critical. I will note that the two thousand and nine urban area transportation plan that was adopted did include the ADT. And level of service. So it did have some data contributing to it. But it was very car-centric and just looking at the level of service and how much volume of vehicles we had. And then also the downtown streets plan and design guide, which we'll talk more about this evening, um, was done concurrently with ITD. Doing data, the uh, Idaho Transportation Department. Developing data and engineering concurrently with that community planning effort. So I would most certainly say that that document. Uh, did have a fair bit of data that went uh, that contributed into it. So while community input is essential in transportation, it's essential in every single planning document. Uh, failure to consider the engineering and functionality side of things as well as having a realistic implementation plan. It kind of gets us to that phrase that people hear a lot, which it's a plan that sits on the shelf. And so when we launched this multimodal transportation planning effort. The uh, committee teams really strive that we don't want to do all of this work and it just be a plan that sits on the shelf. So we want to make sure that the implementation of the plan is really brought forward in a way that's realistic. So it does call, the multimodal plan does call, and I think it's super important that our community recognizes this. That it be updated every five to ten years. So Preston mentioned that our travel demand and our operational analysis, it's time to update that. Fiscal year twenty-four will be requesting uh, additional funds for uh, or in, funds in that budget. Uh, to go about updating that data again. And then the urban area transportation master planning effort that's underway. Uh, it's intended to incorporate the multimodal plan by appendix. And any additional feedback that come contributes through that process. So before I move on to the brief history of US two. Uh, does city council, Mr. Mayor, do we have any questions at this point for the past plan?
Counsel? No, please continue.
You are too fast. I didn't make it. Um, so this slide begins the brief history of US two. This is a snapshot from a presentation that ITD provided in two thousand and thirteen to city council. So in ninety-six, the state purchased the railroad property. In anticipation of a future project. So the railroad property, for those of you that may not know. Yeah, it follows the old rail li, alignment, which is adjacent to our community pathway. Um, right behind Matchwood, if you will, that we have the free parking uh, currently at. ITD owns those lots. And we have an agreement with ITD that we maintain it as a city and our citizens get to park there. So again, the purchase of those parking lots as we use them today was actually for a future expansion of US two. So in two thousand and eight. The byway began and in twenty-ten, the city requested. The curve uh, development be moved forward so that we could get back our streets. We really wanted our streets in our downtown core. Uh, and to help support that effort, we initiated the twenty-eleven Urban Renewal Agency. And that funding really helped us move forward with our concept study. And we have a couple images of that concept study uh, in a bit. And in twenty-twelve, ITD put the uh, project into their federal aid funding. And in twenty-twelve, they began that really detailed intersection analysis. So I want to talk a little bit about the phrase, the curve. It had nothing to do with a couplet or splitting traffic. It was really just the shape. Of that alignment. So the blue line that you see there is a bit of a curve between Cedar and Boyer. So that's where the curve got its branded name. Again, had um, nothing to actually do at the time with um, a couplet concept. And the reason I say that is because again, the railroad right away was purchased for the sake of uh. Providing US two at that location in its full alignment. So in the nineties, the intent was to expand. Uh, US two in a fashion that's very similar to what we have today that's north of Cedar Street. So that five-lane section all the way through that corridor there through those parking lots. That was the intent. And as we continue through the slide, you'll see. That through that detailed analysis and extensive public engagement. Uh, on the left-hand side, you'll see what is known as the couplet. So this image is from our twenty-twelve. Uh, where the city adopted our downtown streets plan and design guide. So at that time, we uh. Through that effort really came out and said, we don't want what's north of Cedar Street. All the way through that corridor. We want to split traffic up and we're going to talk a little bit more about why here in a second. So the green actually has two couplets in it, a couplet, the highlighted green area. A couplet is splitting the directions of traffic. So we have northbound and southbound that is split. And then we also have a split between east and west. So in this image, the couplet. Uh, on church is that uh, church runs westbound in a single one-way. And then Pine Street is a one-way to the east. So again, the couplet concept was favored by the community in twenty-twelve. And that is um. The result of saying what we don't want is what's north of Cedar Street. On US two. So then how does a couplet come back together in two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen? The state and the city collaborated on progressing the design. So if I go back a few slides. In twenty-ten, we said we want to move forward with the curve project and we. Uh, engaged the community in planning this effort. So again, engineering functionality has to go with that. So a detailed analysis on. Concepts specific to the intersection of US two and Boyer Avenue took place. And a variety of solutions were considered. So namely three, there were two different roundabout solutions at that. Location that were analyzed, not just concept. Uh, schematics, but they were actually modeled and engineered to see how they functioned on the system. And then a signal solution. So the criteria there that's in the box is a snapshot from again, the ITD presentation. So we as a community agreed that all of those factors are important to us. And so when we're looking at any solution. We need to weight those criteria and then assign each solution a score. Ultimately, the signal scored the highest. And it scored the highest because again, it's about a balanced approach. So if we were favoring, for example, costs, we might have come up with a different solution. Um, mobility of commerce may have weighed more heavily on one solution than the other. So it's really trying to compare apples to apples of what's important. Overall. And so uh, I think what's really interesting to note that although the signal solution scored the highest at that time. The solution, alternative B, it was called. Didn't change the alignment of the Boyer intersection and US two. And as we'll talk a little bit more, that was one of our community's really big concerns. Not only did it impact dubs. But we have a long list of safety concerns at this intersection today. And at our recent workshops over the last. You know, three to five years, we've heard a lot of feedback from people about site visibility at this location. Uh, how close the intersection of Pine and Boyer is to the highway there. And there's a, a lot of near misses. Because you think you can take a left or go north on Boyer and the signal turns and there you have it. You have a vehicle right on you. Um, the way in which the community path comes in is really awkward. So this alternative B didn't really. Um, the way in which the community path comes in is really awkward, so this alternative B didn't really resolve those issues. Um, we've had questions about uh impacting and uh a section four, and what does that mean? So when there's federal funds involved, um. There are requirements that they. Uh, a state can't impact a park, they actually can't um. Touch it, it's untouchable, so while we'll talk more about the city's solution. As a city, we have the right to uh put a street where a park is. But the state and FHWA uh restrict that, so. They were limited as to how they could fit a solution into the existing footprint, um. While they can acquire private right-of-way or private property to become right-of-way. There's a lot of tools for them to do that as a state, they can't touch our park, so. Um, again, just to really note there that the alignment didn't change, what you're seeing is again back to southbound traffic coming in. And northbound traffic heading one-way uh eastbound on Pine. So as I just mentioned, we still had a lot of concerns about that alternative B in two thousand and thirteen. We gave a long list of uh feedback to the state, uh, once we had more design information, our mayor. In March of twenty-thirteen sent forty comments that our city council came together and said, hey. Here's some current concerns we have about pedestrians and bicycles and lighting and stormwater and all the things that are so important. Then to our community that still are important to the community, and in April of twenty-thirteen. Um, the state responded to all uh forty of those comments. Moving forward with various discussions after that, in June or on June third of two thousand and thirteen. Ultimately, the city decided that we didn't want to implement this project. Uh, we had concerns about impacts to businesses, uh, as the image showed before, we were going to be taking out dubs and icon in our community. Uh, the number of lanes gave us a lot of concern, uh pedestrian and bicycles. Uh, and how they crossed at intersections, the skewed angle of the intersection, all of those were. Resound unanimous concerns by city council. And so uh the project took a pause for the next uh. Year and a half, two years almost, in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the city and ITD signed a formal agreement, which we included in the staff report uh that was published in advance of this workshop. That's Resolution fifteen dash seventeen, and it did a couple things, actually five uh overarching things. The first is that we agreed while. We didn't want the project at this time, that a future expansion would occur on that purchased railroad property when the system fails. And that that failure is defined by ITD and their standards and their design manuals um as well as our agreement. So number two is that the city, we got our downtown streets back, so in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, this was the document that formally gave us First Avenue and Superior and Pine and Cedar. And then we also, in this agreement, uh, ITD. Agreed to design and construct what we have today on Fifth Avenue, which is two lanes plus the turn pockets. And they also agreed to a level of service at intersections on their side of a D. Uh, as opposed to a level of service of D, which is typically acceptable to ITD. And we also agreed. That it's okay if congestion's congestion occurs on our streets, um. Because ultimately, this, the US two functionality prevails, so in order to keep that level of service at D. The state adjusts the signals to make sure that it functions at a level of service of no less than a D. And our system has to, if you will, suffer the consequences of that. Preston, can we pause here for just a quick second and you maybe give a brief introduction about what a level of service is and A, B, C, D?
Yeah, you bet. So I like to consider a, like a grade level in school, it's very similar where A is good. And you go down to level B, C, D, we do add an E in there and then an F. Uh, so E's and F's are are considered pretty congested conditions. Where it's hard to move around and those are the conditions that would be falling below that threshold of ITD saying. We want things at least a D or better, and in most cases, I'd like to see a C in more rural settings and and smaller town settings. Which is actually pretty typical around the nation as far as those thresholds go. Uh, but level service is a state of the practice metric used nationwide.
Thank you. This is just a snapshot of the agreement that's really trying on this slide to summarize what the agreement noted. Again, Resolution fifteen dash seventeen, uh, we agreed. Uh, to the general design of the proposed reconfiguration of US two as shown in Exhibit B, I'll show the exhibit here on the next slide. Um, following the completion of the project, accept the jurisdiction and ownership of the streets that we have downtown. And uh, number five there is that we acknowledge that that minimum performance level of a D. Uh, during AM or PM peak per their manual. Uh, as well as, this was the sentence I was referring to last, um, which is priority shall always be given. To the mainline US two traffic and delay will not be adjusted on US two to improve mobility on the side streets. If the minimum peak hour performance level of D is not being met on US two, as outlined in a separate cooperative agreement. These are the exhibits that were included, so Exhibit A. On the bottom left there, you can see it notes, sorry, it's black and white. Uh, previously acquired railroad right-of-way for future expansion, so we agreed that in the future. If US two needs to be uh improved, that that would be the location of the improvement. Again, the city signed off on that, and then Exhibit B is just reflecting what we have currently in place on Fifth Avenue. Which is, if you will, consider uh on the right-hand side, Exhibit B, think of that as our short or midterm and. On the left-hand side, really more that long-term. So responsible planning, we must plan for growth, that's why we have master plans, uh, and our comprehensive plan is required by. State law to plan appropriately for the future, and so we need to recognize. Uh, what ifs as far as increases in volume of traffic and how as a community, we want to handle that, so. Options, what are our options as the community grows and our region grows and we start to see an increase in vehicular traffic? We really hope, we have three. Uh, one is to move pass-through traffic out of town. Uh, that would be another byway, which has been considered by the city uh over the last twenty years, so. Whether that be on Great Northern or Sarinca Heights or a variety of different locations, uh, similar to what we did with the Highway ninety-five byway, let's just get. Get the traffic out of town, so that's option one. Option two is that we could, we being. The community, it could be widened, you know, US two could be widened into a single alignment similar to what we have on US two north of Cedar Street. Which was the plan in the nineties. Or we can split the directions of travel, similar to many other downtowns and what was shown in our twenty-twelve Downtown Streets Plan and Guide. That our community weighed in and said, this is why we favor of these three options, a couplet solution. I've tried to summarize them uh in partnership with Preston here on the bottom of the screen, A through E. Why would we of those three options as a community consider a couplet solution? Preston, do you mind going over A through E?
You bet, so in general, when you. You have fewer lanes, meaning instead of having lots of lanes, we'll we'll use five in this instance, instead of having a five-lane cross-section like on Cedar. Having it split into a couplet, you're then just putting them up into two. So you have two on one road, two on the other road in opposite directions. And in this case, we're we're saying the turn lanes would be accommodated within those travel lanes and not having separate auxiliary lanes to do your turn movements. Uh, so that's, you're essentially reducing a lane by one, but also. As far as a crossing standpoint, whether your vehicle's crossing that that street. Or pedestrians and bikes crossing that street, you're crossing less number of lanes than you would a larger cross-section. Uh, and as a result, you're retaining character of the downtown environment, meaning it's. You're you're maintaining a more vibrant, walkable community by having less lanes. And uh, less traffic, because now you're split your traffic in half as well. And uh, because of those things I just mentioned, you have a safer pedestrian bicycle crossing, instead of crossing again. Five lanes in this example, uh, we're crossing two lanes once and then down the road, crossing two lanes again. You're splitting your conflict points in half as well, which also relates to the safeties aspect of it. When you're crossing a multi-lane road with bidirectional traffic. As a pedestrian, you have multiple points of conflict, that'll be their turning movements from the side street that you're crossing from. Or the through movements in both directions, as well as the turn movements in the center turn lane. And crossing a one-way street and in this instance, two lanes that we're talking in this example. You have those two conflict points plus any turn turning movements um in that one direction. Depending where your crosswalk is, so you're you're greatly reducing your conflict points, conflict points equals. Pensity for conflicts or or potential crashes, and those are what we want to reduce. Uh, for snow storage, um, those are obviously areas where you can put your snow in areas. Along the street that are designated for those, uh, that, you know, kind of you think about on-street parking areas, in this case, we're not talking about on-street parking, but you think of that for. For storing your snow on the side of the roads or in landscaped areas, planter areas. Uh, that wouldn't be affecting your path for bikes and pedestrians, but instead in areas where they're not affecting travel. And then more wider sidewalks, obviously, we have more right-of-way width because we don't have to accommodate as many lanes in that same area, so now we have more width. To work with, to do, put in street furniture, put in landscaping, put in wider sidewalks, multi-use paths. Uh, that can be bidirectional in some cases, depending on our right-of-way width, so. Those are the top, those are the five.
Thank you, Preston. So by way of an example, uh, there are a number of communities uh with. Throughout our country that have a couplet solutions through their downtown core for all the reasons that Preston just articulated. This particular one is an example of a historic downtown area, I'm sure many in the room have been to Ashland, Oregon. It is known uh for many things, but particularly it's nine-month-long Shakespeare Festival, if you haven't been, I highly recommend it. Uh, it's a really vibrant area, the character in this location is phenomenal, the streets are typically loaded with pedestrians. Um, their Shakespeare Festival is actually immediately adjacent to this road that's uh imaged on the right-hand side. It's also a college town, so it really has a variety of different users between tourism, um, as well as uh the university there, so. On the left-hand side is depicting the couplet, on the upper-left-hand side, Lithia Way and Main Street splits into uh. One ways, two lanes of one-way traffic, and that is Oregon ninety-nine, so for those of you uh that don't know where Ashland is, I apologize. It's about fifteen miles north of the California border uh on I five. So then on the bottom right-hand side of that same Google image, the couplet comes back together at an intersection. On the right is a Google uh snapshot from East Main Street uh looking to what is north. And you can see the parking arrangement that they have that's separated from. The highway so that you don't have vehicles backing up uh onto the highway, but yet it's done in that landscaped character. Uh, that Preston mentioned earlier, as well as the nice pedestrian crossings that they have, um, providing access and short crossing distances. It features the uh urban forest that is really essential in the Ashland area as well, they've done a great job to protect their trees and and plant many more. Um, very much a place um where pedestrians and bicyclists feel comfortable, you can see they even have the sharrows on their highway. Uh, which I think is really cool, um, and what I also thought was interesting is at this location where I took the photo, it has a walk score of ninety-four. It's considered a walker's paradise on a couplet. And uh, US two right now in Sandpoint has a walk score of thirty. So we have a lot of opportunity to improve our community's goals, to make our town a better walking environment. I think um what's also really interesting about this image is that it doesn't split the community. So this couplet effectively goes through what is a very vibrant area of downtown Ashland, a community not that far off in our size. Um, and again, it's a sense of place, it's not a divide at all within the community, quite the opposite.
Amanda, I'll add to that as well, that that street carries. Uh, not quite double, but almost double what current US two does for us. And uh, this is split, obviously, so this is about nine thousand to ten thousand cars a day on on the one-way street, which. In our projected, looking into twenty forty, we'll talk about this in a minute, but our projected twenty forty volumes. Are about twenty thousand on US two, split by half into a couplet, it's about ten thousand each, which equals almost the exact same as this, which is interesting.
Thank you, Preston, I think that's a great point, and I think, you know, in twenty-twelve and looking at the couplet solution, I think that. A a lot of individuals in our community really recognize the value that a couplet can have to pedestrians and bicyclists, especially through um a downtown area. Do you want to talk, Preston, a little bit more about these examples?
Sure, just a couple other examples, and obviously, these aren't always, you know, one-to-one comparables to what we're talking about today, but just to give you an idea of. What others look like, and and these are all in downtown settings or just adjacent to downtown settings. And uh, some of them are couplets, some are just one-way streets. Uh, we have two other small, medium-sized towns here, Golden, Colorado, on the left-hand side with Jackson Street. Uh, it's a two-lane, one-way facility, has a bike lane there, has a, it's a large sidewalk on the side with landscaping. And again, in the same realm of about ten thousand. Uh, daily traffic volumes, Corvallis on the other side. Another one-way street, two lanes, there's some construction happening in that photo, but uh another way to. Traffic calm things as well as to create bulbouts, which is that landscape bulbout there with the crossing. They don't have the cross, the crosswalk painted yet in the middle of construction, but that's soon to come, but that's a. It creates shorter crossings for pedestrians and also gives a visual friction for motorists to slow down. The next one, a couple other examples. Are from Eugene, two different roadways. Um, and different ways of traffic calming as as well, they used paint in the one image on the left-hand side on Oak Street. To imitate bulbouts for for, again, for visual purposes, they also use planters up on the. On the top end of that photo with some caustic barriers as well for the pedestrian crossing. In the other image, there's a cycle track, which is a protected bicycle path in- included into that roadway width. So there's lots of ways to look at things, but they all are kind of serving the same purpose, anywhere from seven to twelve thousand daily traffic volume on these roads. And these are also from a speed limit standpoint, ranging from twenty to thirty-five miles per hour. And then lastly, the last ones are from Madison, Wisconsin. Another one-way, two-lane street. Uh, especially like the one on the left-hand side, this is the same street in both images, just one's further down the road than the other. But you can see they have, they have a multi-use path, actually, on both sides of the street. Uh, it's it's asphalt pavement on the right-hand side, a concrete pavement on the left-hand side, you see the pedestrians there in the one image. There's some sitting areas and a restaurant on the left-hand side as well, so these are. And and Amanda mentioned this too, uh, with Ashland, it's interesting that these are. Almost all, except for Golden, Colorado, college towns. Which we didn't, we didn't find these photos on purpose that way, it just turns out that way, which is interesting to me, not that Sandpoint's a college town, but. The vibrancy that comes with the college towns, and a lot of people walking and biking, milling around, eating in establishments next to it. Is conducive to a nice environment, even with the one-way street.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, Preston, uh, interesting you highlight the college town, am I not mistaken that? Um, Moscow, Idaho has a couplet on Highway ninety-five, two lanes northbound, two lanes southbound that are attached by several blocks, so Moscow itself is split by a couplet. I hadn't thought of that before tonight, I did have a question for you about some of these examples, though. Um, one of the comments from city council back in twenty thirteen to the ITD was the request that the. Design for Highway two through Sandpoint include uh. Lanes that are only ten feet wide, ITD responded that. Lanes will be twelve feet wide to accommodate high percentage of trucks, I'm just wondering from these examples, do you happen to know the way, the lane widths for some of these? Do these reflect ten-foot-wide lanes or twelve-foot-wide lanes, because some of these look, you know, quite quaint and small, but I wonder, are these. Examples that are realistic for what ITD has in mind through Sandpoint?
I don't know the measurements exactly, my guess is that they're ranging from ten to twelve feet, that that's a pretty standard width. Across the nation as far as widths go, and that's not uncommon for DOTs to. Require twelve-foot lanes and sometimes eleven foot lanes, most likely don't allow ten-foot lanes, is in my experience. Um. But those are, I I, that image on this, on the. Screen right now, those are probably eleven-foot lanes based on what I can see there. And uh, I'm, I I don't know, I don't know if ITD is going to. Let us waiver a little bit on some of those, maybe when you get to the bulbout areas on the crossings, there may be some ability to constrict for those crossing purposes. Uh, but we do need to accommodate trucks as well.
Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can I chime in there to help address the question, Jason, to Jason? Um, I just want to note that our downtown streets uh that have been revitalized on Cedar and First Avenue, those are. Um, I just want to note that our downtown streets uh, that have been revitalized on Cedar and First Avenue, those are all twelve-foot lanes. We recently restriped Boyer Avenue to get it back to a standard of twelve-foot lane so that we could accommodate appropriate widths for bicyclists. So we actually have consistently used twelve-foot lanes throughout our town, and it is the standard, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Preston, I'm gonna keep with you on this slide, please.
Okay, um, let's talk about highways. We kind of talked about the purposes of our tarials in general, which oftentimes are highways. To the need for accommodate higher traffic volumes, sometimes higher speeds. And in this case, trucks, uh, since it is a state highway, uh, there is a need for to accommodate trucks. And oftentimes, large trucks. There is some pass-through travel on here that that was part of the origin destination using the cell phone data is to help understand what that pass-through is. And the, a a good portion of pass-through was pushed to the byway when it was constructed. But there is still some pass-through on this, and it's not a large number. Um, in fact, a majority of the trips that are happening in town are local trips, meaning trips that start and end within town without leaving anywhere else. And the next biggest portion of trips that are starting in town and then going out elsewhere, or starting out elsewhere and coming into town. And the smaller proportion of that is pass-through on US two itself. And that, if you were to think about uh, a- about eleven percent of all trips in Sandpoint. Have, go through Fifth Avenue right now, US two portion of Fifth Avenue. And of that eleven percent, sixteen percent of that is passed through right now today. So there is a component we do need to accommodate there, but it's not a huge component. Um, so that's.
Preston, can I interrupt you there for a second? I'm sorry. I just wanted to note that that cell phone data was collected in January and or December and January, just so our. Um, our city council and the public is aware that that's not considering our tourism season. Where potentially pass-through traffic would be a a higher rate.
But, man, I think it's actually January to December of.
January to December. Okay, perfect.
Year twenty nineteen data.
So the average of that period.
The average, yeah.
Yep.
So obviously, by season, you could see some differences in in pass-by.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so let's talk about the jurisdiction here. Amanda's touched on this already. US two is a state facility. We as city do not have jurisdiction over what we do with that. We can't help influence as much as we can. And that's what we're hoping to do with this plan is to help educate them on what our goals and objectives are as a city. And hopefully persuade them that, you know, here's our goals. Can we help you in in your next steps? When you get to the point of evaluating and doing your own due diligence and evaluating these as our, as your baseline. Um, before you get into design. Uh, let's see what else we want to touch on here. Uh, we've touched on that already, uh. Okay, so the roundabout, let's talk about the roundabout employer in US two. So that was uh, an alternative evaluated instead of the traffic signal. And I I'm actually an advocate of of roundabouts. I have several of those being constructed of my projects as we speak. Um, and they definitely have their time and their place. And and they have their time and their place, which means they don't always fit in every situation, and that can go for any intersection type. Uh, which is why we look at various alternatives when we look at uh, intersections. With roundabout design and functionality, the, for roundabouts to fit, to work in their most efficient manner. You need to have balanced volumes on all your approaches. And the reason you want balanced volumes, meaning. Just for an example, we want, we would want something like eight hundred on the northbound. We want eight hundred in the eastbound or westbound, eight hundred southbound, eight hundred eastbound. Obviously, you can give or take a hundred or so within those to get your more or less equal balanced volumes. In this case, we're not even close to that. We have a thousand going northbound. We have eight hundred going southbound, we have a hundred and fifty going westbound, and almost five hundred going eastbound. So you can see the imbalance around that. And because of that, the roundabout actually ends up in failing conditions. Below a level service D, which is unfortunate because there are some benefits with those. There, they do have a tendency to slow traffic down, and they have a tendency to reduce the severity of crashes. Not necessarily reduce the number of crashes, but reduce the severity of crashes. Uh, but and and if they're designed correctly, they can accommodate trucks. But in this case, uh, it is not a good application given what we saw. And you do have some queues that spill back into adjacent intersections as a result of that. And that's, that's looking at a single-lane roundabout.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, Preston, when we talked this afternoon, I looked into the roundabout solution. And when I called ITD, they said they do not put roundabouts on state highway systems. And so I read an article actually from October twenty twenty-two in Ketchum Haley. And the ITD was gonna go along with their, because they wanted a roundabout on the state highway to move traffic through. And ITD said, um, came back and said, no, we're not gonna do that. Uh, we don't want to set a precedent. And so I think that, and they said because of volumes, and so they didn't want it on any of the state highway systems. And I know you and I talked about that a bit, and you couldn't think of any of them that had. I I like roundabouts as well, so I was quite, I was quite interested in the fact that they said no. So I'm not sure if they'll change their mind, or if that's even an option, but just some information I found out.
That's interesting. It it's tough to say if they'll change their mind or not. Um, there there are other DOTs that were on their same page as far as. Don't want roundabouts anywhere that have since changed their minds in other states, so uh, it may be coming down the road. Uh, but for now, that's, they're scared of setting a precedent and and.
Yeah, but ju- just to be clear, a a roundabout based on the data and the analysis, I think you're gonna show us some examples of the type of analysis you do. Uh, with computer simulations, show a roundabout solution as failing immediately at that intersection. So despite the visual appeal, the kind of modern progressive appeal of roundabouts. And they seem to work pretty well in other parts of town. At that intersection, we'd immediately have a level service that's below the current level of service. So ITD wouldn't support it whether or not they support roundabouts because it's a failing solution.
Right.
And and you you could say, well, what about a two-lane roundabout? I think as a pedestrian, a cyclist, that would be possibly the worst possible outcome for that intersection. Two-lane roundabouts are not appealing to anybody.
They they are harder to navigate, especially for those who aren't used to going through them. Um, and we try to stay away from those as much as we can. And try to make a one-lane work as much as possible. Uh, they, they can work and they do work places. But uh, you know, for pedestrians and cyclists, they're uh, super comfortable, uh, to your point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And during my conversation with Preston this afternoon, um. I asked him some out-of-the-box questions and said, you know, if we weren't necessarily designing for the state highway. And we were designing just for the residents of Sandpoint, how would he look at this differently? And he said that there were many napkin sketches that happened, and he went so far as to dig back into his files. And find something that was not under the proper heading and showed me some of the napkin sketches. And he um, quite lovingly referred to it as the blob about, because it wasn't truly a roundabout. So he was going out of his way to figure out how that potentially could work, but could not find a solution. To make the cars go through without failing. Um, I then discussed with him my experiences with some roundabouts that aren't full, complete two-lane roundabouts. But in certain sections have uh, prioritized turning out lane or turning in lane for different directions of traffic. And we discussed that at length, and those things would also fail or become much less safe. For um, bicyclists and pedestrians. Um, so I just wanted to share that with the public that um, we, as your council members, are up here trying to figure out solutions. I went home after my two fifteen meeting that ended at three o'clock and got on the internet and started searching other options about. Well, how can we think out of the box? Preston's one human being, but maybe there's another human being on the planet. Um, and I was unable to come up with solutions, so we continue to work hard.
The the, that's a good comment. I'll just add on to that. That brings up a thought I had in Park City, Utah, which is another. Resort-oriented recreation town uh, that sees snow and and there's a, a another state highway. That feeds into one of their big ski resorts in town called Deer Valley. And they call it the Marsack Roundabout. There's a roundabout done twenty years ago or so, uh, that we actually worked on back then. And it, with the amount of traffic coming through that, and again, unbalanced approach of that roundabout. It quickly got to a failing standpoint to where they had to put in a bypass lane. So there's a whole separate lane. So now they have two lanes going through the roundabout, but one separated by a curb to go, and it's free flow through. While the other traffic is going through and being metered by the roundabout, just to get it to work. And there's zero pedestrians in there, there's zero bicycles in there. They took them completely off the system because it's just not safe and conducive to that sort of use. Any other questions? We might move on to the next slide.
I can take this one if you want to breathe in break, Preston. Uh, I think this slide speaks for itself, that planning doesn't necessarily equal faster implementation of construction. So specific to US two, many more factors are uh, required to move forward. Before any actual construction would take place. A, we need as jurisdictions data to support what we do moving forward. Uh, as far as a need, and then that has, the project has to be included in an adopted budget. Uh, everyone is familiar with the city's annual budget. From a state's perspective, it's an eight-year forecast called the ITIP. Which is their transportation investment plan. Uh, it needs an engineered design. Uh, previous presentations at city council, we mentioned, you know, three years is the fastest. Um, that is. Really rare. It typically takes approximately three years to do a design uh. It overall, and then we obviously have right-of-way acquisition uh, and then bidding a project within the budget that was assigned. And awarding a contract ultimately. So those steps, uh, we as the city even implement them on projects like Great Northern. So every one of those steps has to be, uh, the box has to be checked before we move forward with construction. So just because there's a concept, um, doesn't necessarily mean that it's faster implemented. But what shovel-ready designs do, so going from concept to an actual design, is that checking the box of design. Enables our community to have certainty and understanding that someday, when there is enough data to support a need. We all know what that looks like, and it's not a concept that's gonna continue to evolve and evolve and evolve over time, that it's actually a design. So adjacent property owners in the community understand what that crossing looks like, and where are the trees, and what type of lighting is gonna be provided. Um, and it's all been modeled and and we all agree upon it. So many more steps of engagement and levels of detail that go into the the process of getting to actual construction. This one's for you, Preston.
All right, let's talk about ADT. That's, that's actually, that's. We misspoke there. It's not annual daily traffic, it's average daily traffic. There is another term called A ADT, which is Annual Average Daily Traffic, which is just a slightly different term. So we look at, we look at ADT for a couple of reasons. One, it just informs us from a high level. How we should size our streets at at a very high planning level side of things. And that's about all we use it for. We then dig into the peak hour side of things, and there are typically two peak hours in your day. You have your morning peak and you have an afternoon peak. And and in this case, we looked at the worst peak of those two peaks for the planning uh, of the MTMP. And that was the PM, the afternoon peak. So most of our, all of our traffic analysis was done based on that worst peak hour of the day. But also based on kind of your average day of the year, your May conditions, where in school still in session. But not like your peak, peak days that would happen in a summer day in July or August. So ITD collects ADT data on a regular basis. They have continuous count stations at periodic locations on their systems throughout the state. Uh, that is continuously counting traffic, and then where they don't have a continuous count stations, they go out there and put down two counts. On an occasional basis every few years to get a spot count, and then kind of estimate that throughout the years as it goes along before they count another one. Uh, and then the city also collects their own data as well at various locations, both from a ADT standpoint on some roadways. As well as collecting some intersection counts. And when we talk about intersection counts, those are turning movement counts, so we're collecting. How traffic is moving, each movement through that intersection, including pedestrians and bikes. And uh, let's see, we talked about how it's not representative of busy season and summer. Um, winter is pretty considerably lower than summer when you, when you're looking at those two, but it is. Uh, you do have some peaks in there during some of that winter time. But May and September tend to be on the higher end of average, but still in that average and not quite your peak, peak like you see in the summer. And that's what most of the planning is based upon, kind of this, the. The moniker of you don't want to build a church for Easter Sunday, as the example, it's, we don't want to build our roadways. For that peak condition, those peak conditions that are happening because of events. That's where management comes into play. You need to have event management plans for those. You don't build your streets for those peak summer days. Uh, let's go to the next slide. So let's just look at the historical data here. This is on US two, right around um, the downtown area. So in twenty ten, the ADT, every daily traffic was just over twenty thousand. Uh, I think it's twenty thousand two hundred. And that was, if you remember, that was still kind of in the middle of the Great Recession. Things hadn't picked back up yet. It, this was, this was a phenomenon nationwide. Traffic volumes dropped, decreased. Gas prices were way up and so forth, so you saw some decreases in in travel, and that's why you saw that initial decrease. And then the bypass was constructed in twenty twelve, that opened up, and you see a drastic decrease in traffic volumes at that point. From there on, you see a gradual increase, kind of start to climb back up, climb back up, climb back up. And if you're looking at that over the years, it's about an average of about two and a half percent per year average is what you're looking at there. And you see that drop in twenty twenty from the pandemic, as people were kind of in lockdown mode and then starting to pick back up. So as of today, or in twenty twenty-two, in this instance, we're at thirteen thousand five hundred. The next slide, so look at forecasting. So as we forecast out to the year that we were estimating in our kind of build-out phase or a long-term phase in the master plan. Was the year twenty forty. So if you were to use the trends that have been happening historically and continue those forward. And actually, the more recent trends are even higher than that two-point-five number I was mentioning. Right now, or the average is about two-point-three percent per year traffic growth. Which is slightly lower than the population percent increase that I mentioned earlier, but it's, it's trending right along that same line. Uh, but just not quite a one-to-one ratio. So if that trend continues, we're gonna be right back where we were in twenty ten. We're at the same point in twenty forty, three bypass. Uh, obviously, lots of things can change and occur there, and uh, you know, population. I know there's projections for population to double between now and and twenty forty, twenty fifty. Uh, and and that's happening across the West as well, as people are kind of flooding out of different states and going to. Uh, more rural-type areas and working remotely and and all sorts of things that are happening and occurring with that. And there's, there are things that came out of the Trend Lab Plus workshop that we talked about earlier that helped decrease some of that. Uh, projection as well. Uh, teenagers are not getting the licenses at sixteen as often as they were when we were all growing up. Um, and so those, those are all kind of things. Gas prices are fluctuating, there's all sorts of things that go into this. Uh, the retirement population, um, all those things factor into how people are going to travel into the future. But just based on historical trends of what we're seeing right now, this is actual data. This isn't even forecasting data. This is actual data from the last five, ten years. Continuing on that trend, we're gonna be at over twenty thousand on US two by twenty forty.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, just to be clear, so there's no confusion, that red line, one could see that and see there's not gonna be any ebbs and flows through the years. It's just an idea, right, to get to twenty thousand, not that it's gonna be perfect.
Forecasted number. There's gonna be oscillations.
Just in case there's any confusion for.
It's centered in what you're seeing on that, on the previous ten years there, where you see some spikes going up, spikes going down for whatever reasons. In this case, we had a pandemic in the middle of that and um, in twenty sixteen. Or twenty seventeen or so, I'm not sure what happened there, but you you'll see oscillations, no doubt, within that.
Fun, make sure, some people don't get confused.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Question, um, that these, this rate of growth of two-point-five percent, does that also assume that. The composition of the traffic using Highway two will be the same as with regards to what percentage are. Within town to within town, within town to Bonner County, Bonner County to within town, which I think you said earlier is the majority of traffic. The vast majority of traffic on Highway two is local traffic, basically. Um, I would just point out some, something for the council to consider and for our planning teams to consider is. You know, when we talk about multimodal transportation, if we successfully implement a, 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 an effective multimodal transportation plan. Uh, it seems possible that we can change the. Uh, it seems possible that we can change the modes of transportation that people choose in the future. So that people choose to use their vehicles perhaps less for local trips. So when we talk about priority production network, bicycle network, a, a highly effective multimodal transportation plane, plan should result in. People opting for alternative modes of transportation. So I would hope that one of our planning goals would be to reduce the percentage of trips taken by vehicles in standpoint. So that this, we can flatten the curve here. And perhaps, you know, re- reduce the demand for vehicle travel within standpoint. That, that to me is like hopeful planning for true multimodal transportation. We assume people are always gonna drive at the rate they do now. I think if, if that's an assumption we're making, it means we're failing with regards to our pedestrian and cyclist networks.
And that is called for multiple places in the complaint.
Exactly, that's and a key element of our compliance. So truly like if we're really planning based on our complaint and our own vision for the future. I would hope that this number would never come to pass.
Those are great, great thoughts. And I'll just add a couple of things to that. Uh, cause the standpoint's not alone in experiencing this. Uh, and wanting to find other solutions to mitigating their future growth. That's bound to happen, uh, unless we stop people from living here and having babies and those sort of things. Population is going to continue to grow. And if we continue to develop and house them and uh, have places for them to work, that, that trend will continue to grow. Right now, based on our planning. This is assuming the, the status quo. What, what is happening now with that growth rate applied to that? There are uh, transportation demand management strategies that then can come into play to help. Incentivize and educate folks to make different choices in how they travel. Uh, to not travel by themselves in their vehicles, to have high occupancy vehicles. To choose to telecommute, uh, work from home or at least shift their work schedules without traveling during the peak times. From a sustainability standpoint. To walk or to bike, to have car shares, to have micro mobility, have scooter options and e-bike shares. I mean, there's, we can go down the list of lots of things, walking school buses, uh, which was actually mentioned as part of the division. Uh, roads, road safety audit. So there's lots of things to do here and there's lots of communities as examples here. I will say, this is, it's a tough road to incentivize people to take this. And oftentimes it takes monetary incentive to help them do this. Otherwise they don't. Uh, and you can look at Stanford University, we do a lot of work with Stanford. They, they get fined by the city of Palo Alto if they don't maintain a certain level of traffic going in and out of their campus. And so it's a kind of draconian side of things. That's, that's what they've been limited to. So every year they have to revamp their TDM, their transportation management strategies to limit that number. I think it's around forty thousand trips into in and out of their campus. Uh, you know, giving free transfer passes to their staff and their employees and to the students. And uh, incentivizing by different educational programs. Helping, not allowing parking for certain classes and grades. So there's lots of things you can do. And I'll, I'll use one other example, Aspen, Colorado. Uh, another one of our clients. They, they took us, they took a stance in nineteen ninety six to say. This traffic level that we see right now, we don't want any worse than this. This is where we wanna be max level. And so that was written. And in order to maintain that, cause obviously they haven't stayed stagnant, they've continued to redevelop and populations increased. Uh, they have to maintain what that average daily traffic is going across their bridge into town. And they look at it on a weekly basis and actually get alerts when they get near that number or go over that number. And then they kind of kick in some other TDM strategies to, to get below that. That is a, a. That is a constant struggle for them and it's a, it's a great goal. Uh, and you know, they have a lot of great things happening in town as a result of it. Uh, but it does. Uh, it costs a lot of money for one, um, and it takes a lot to educate. The community and to help change their behaviors to get them to that point. And they're having to revamp it every single year because once maybe one thing, maybe they put in e-bike share system. Uh, that helps reduce that and keeps them down below that. But by next year, people have changed to maybe a little bit or new people moved in or whatever the situation is. And that trouble has changed and swung back the other way and now they're exceeding again. So to go back, revisit things, what do we need to change this year? And it's not necessarily capital improvements. A lot of times they're, um, the program improvements or stipulations they put on developments. So there's things down the road here we can think of as a city to start to put into place and on the TDM side of it.
Sure. And just with the full awareness that the, the ITD corridor itself is not the city's jurisdiction. Um, from a, a comp plan perspective, from a city vision and planning perspective. If, 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 if we want to avoid having a four or five lane highway through this town, perhaps we should. Start thinking about changing our behaviors because eighty percent of the traffic on that highway, which ITD is measuring. And basing their future planning decisions on is our traffic. It's us driving. I, I'm guilty. I drove here tonight and I live half a mile away. I see my friend rode his bike tonight. I should have done the same. But that's just something for everybody to consider, right? I mean, it's, it's our use of this corridor. That will ultimately result in the ITDs coming here and doing what they need to do to accommodate our use. If we don't want to see that widening, if we want to see something at a smaller scale, it's gonna require our community to make changes and to. Um, you know, perhaps vision and, and we're all, uh, councilwoman, councilwoman, uh, rule. Brought up the term induced demand at our February meeting. If we build for twenty thousand vehicles. Uh, today, we're gonna have twenty thousand vehicles in fifteen years. If, if we, if we plan for a smaller capacity and then come up with alternatives and incentivize. I'm not talking about congestion charges or, you know, taxing people who drive in our city streets. But um, if, if we do prioritize those pedestrian cyclist networks, I'm hopeful that perhaps we don't need to design for a twenty thousand. Um, ADT future.
Yeah, oh, good comments. Uh, I wanna add a couple of things on to that. I'm glad you picked out that a majority of the traffic that's happening in town is you, us. Uh, it's not so much the pass by, so it's important to understand that because the issues that are happening in town are because of all of us here. So there is a, a great opportunity to change things in the future. Right now, if we don't change things, that's where we're gonna be.
Exactly.
And the other important thing to understand is that, uh. Building roads doesn't create traffic. Land use generates traffic. So by building roads doesn't mean the cars are just gonna show up. Land use is what generates the traffic. It's the people who are using that land use that are generating the traffic. If there, if there was nothing here, there'd be no cars on that road. So we need to understand that too. It's not just because we build it, doesn't mean that they will come. If we build it, yes, people are gonna come because the population's increasing. So that's where we need to start looking at the educational side of it on the TDM and changing travel behaviors and how we travel in town.
Ready for me to advance the slide?
Yeah.
I think Preston, this is just recapping what you stated, um, and maybe giving some examples of what's failing in town by the metric of a level of service. You wanna maybe speak to Bridge and First and then uh, the east side of Church at Fifth?
Yeah. And, and Bridge of First is one of those intersections that we did look at, some peak season conditions. And on a Saturday condition because of the nature of that intersection and, and the people it's serving. Uh, everyone's aware of that situation during peak times. It gets very congested with very long queues backing up across the bridge and into downtown. And so the, the plan focused on some alternatives there to help mitigate that situation, both in a short term and a long term. Condition, uh, church and fifth is where the traffic signal is today. And I think everyone's probably experienced that as well. You, you'll see on a regular basis, especially in the evenings. But that queue is backing up for quite a ways over several blocks into downtown. So those are intersections. Uh, that are currently failing and there, there are likely other intersections that are failing in certain movements. But when you think about, I should probably clarify that level of service is looked at slightly differently at a signalized intersection or a roundabout. Those two are the same in that they look at the average delay of everyone using that roundabout from all sides of it or all sides of the signal averaged together. When you're looking at a stop sign, stop controlled intersection. The level of service is based on the worst movement of that intersection, which typically is that left turn at that stop sign. They tend to be the worst because they have to wait for gaps in precise traffic to make their movement. There's just a clarification on that. Uh, we can probably move on to Amanda.
Okay. So I think this slide, uh, really the intent of it is to, uh. Recapture our simulations and introduce the idea of uh, running different models so that do nothing. Uh, other than move the signal from church to pine, the option of keeping everything a single lane of travel. On US two and then uh, two lanes of travel in each direction on US two. And I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here so that Preston can show you the simulations.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna show you a couple, or I guess three videos here. And a couple of things to note here as I get this queued up. So this is a, this is just a snapshot in time. We run our analysis for a, a full hour of that peak hour, i- in this case, the PM peak hour. Looking at kind of your average day of the year, a, a Mayish timeframe. And um, this is not necessarily your peak of your peak, but it's a generalized peak in your, in your. So there, we're just looking at a minute snapshot in time. So. Understand that there are times where things may be worse. There could be times where things are even better than this. Uh, but just know this is just a snapshot within a peak hour to see if you can understand, understand how traffic is moving around.
And this is present day infrastructure?
Yes, thank you. This is, this is. Partially present day infrastructure with a couple of improvements. Those improvements being the short term improvements that were stated in the MTMP. Though that being the signal at church moved down to pine and then pine being changed or converted to a two-way. Traffic. So those are the changes you'll see here. Plus, the new signal at Ella Avenue, uh, crossing.
And the numbers that you're running here are the tw- twenty thousand four hundred that we saw project.
Yes, the year twenty forty, those are, those are the, so that projected volume. Uh, so everything else is the same, meaning US two is maintaining a two lane facility with turn lanes where they're needed at the intersections. The red line is your multi-use path, the community path. On the side of the road, you can't see them, but there are pedestrians and bicycles traveling on that red path. Crossing over Ella Avenue here. Start to see some cues building up here as you get to Boyer. And I'm gonna pause this real quick. So you can see this is existing or non-existing, but this is the existing infrastructure on pine, meaning today. Pine has to come over here to Boyer to then turn, uh, to get onto US two. This queue of pine goes on for quite a ways and it will continue to do that and be worse. Uh, this, as everyone knows, this is kind of a massive uh, situation between Boyer and Pine and then the one-way portion of Pine. Uh, you also see queues starting to build up on US two heading. Towards Fifth Avenue. So we do have, uh, so this is kind of a do nothing other than those short-term improvements we talked about. We'll move over here to the signal at Pine and. In general. You'll see, uh, this is starting to clear out a little bit with the simulation, but this queue will back up for. Quite a ways up into here. You can see it building up in here, up into Cedar. So if we do nothing, you will start to have queues spilling back into our signals. And into Church Street and, and even going forward. Okay, let's look at. Another one here. Let's look at the. This will kind of take us along the same path visually what we just did. Everything here stays the same infrastructure wise, uh, but we do have a couple of models here as we get up to. Uh, these two. This is the re- realigned Boyer. So with the south leg there with a left turn into Boyer.
Can you pause there really quick?
Let me go back just a little bit.
Can you just highlight where the, uh, Dub's property is?
Okay, so this is the Dub's property. What this model isn't showing, um, and it should be, is. With the Dub's property now, uh, in our. Area to be able to use. This Boyer would then tie in in a T formation here. And the reason for that is. One, we tee up to an intersection. We, we always want to tee to a ninety degrees perpendicular to a roadway whenever possible. You get into skews and you start to get into issues of longer pedestrian crossings, longer bicycle crossings and port, port sight distance. Having to look over your shoulder in a way that isn't conducive to seeing things real well and a higher propensity of crashes happening because of that. So keeping things at a ninety degrees as much as possible. So that, that's what the Dub's property helps us do is create a safer condition. But also it gives us a longer, uh, length between. Where this left turn would be to come in here on Boyer. To where this left turn that goes into on Pine with this new realigned intersection is. So we don't have what currently is showing here, this overlapped condition where it's kind of wide. It won't need to be that wide at that point because we're shifting everything down. We can have a longer queue length. For this left turn going into Boyer and also have a longer queue length or storage length for the left turn going on to Pine here.
So just to be clear, this is what's currently in our adopted multimodal plan. With one exception, our current plan shows four lanes. Two in each direction west of Boyer. This simulation is showing one lane with a turn lane at intersections.
Yes, correct. So graphically, the plan does show multiple lanes. It was never intended or even written in the MTMP that there were multiple lanes on these roadways. Uh, understanding that. ITD is gonna have to go through their due diligence through their design work to, to understand what that is. Now we're. We're keeping things fairly, uh, big picture here in that term and right now it looks like. Two lanes, three lanes at the intersections should work okay going southwest. Down on, on US two. Uh, the one change also that's not in the MTMP, which is the change that was suggested in the February meeting. Is this left turn into Boyer. In the MTMP, there is a connection to Boyer here, but it was a right and right out only. So with, uh, with Dub's happening here and us being able to push its intersection further away from the pine intersection. We're able to get that left turn in here and have it work efficiently. So that's, that's another change.
So the advantage of Dub's, which was the original proposed amendment six weeks ago was to realign Boyer through the Dub's property. Is to assure sa- safe left turn from westbound highway two on the south Boyer. Whereas in this concept, that is not a safe distance between the, the signaled intersection and the left turn on the boy.
Oh, I would say it's a safe distance, but it's not a distance that is, uh. Uh, well, to use your words, uh. I'm gonna say safe, but I'm not saying safe in terms of crash purposes, but a, we don't want queues going back into that signal.
Gotcha.
And the further away we can get from that signal and not have queues back up into that signal, the better off we are. And being able to have a smaller cross section in this area where. This left turn right here isn't overlapping with this left turn right here. They can have their own little area and be nice and tight in that. So that, that there, this model also doesn't show sidewalks other than this multi-use path, but there are sidewalks proposed. For, uh, this south side of US two that parallels here, uh, where there aren't any today. So crossing wise, uh, and I should mention, this, this portion of Boyers would be gone in this instance. Uh, what we do with this area of green space, leave a green space, whatever. You end up doing with that is available. This portion of Boyer does remain. It's not showing in this, in this model, but this portion of Boyer is there.
And, and you know visually too, like the, the way that this appears is, um. Like it's, you know, multiple roads essentially, but that's for visual purposes to be able to identify the flow of traffic, but it. This is essentially a standard two lane road like we have there today. That's right.
So now we got, we start to get into the couplet area and you'll notice here, I'll pause here for a second as well. With a one lane couplet, so we have one lane southbound here. And you'll see in a minute, this is one way northbound over here. Which generally, uh, is. Which generally, uh, is, will probably get us by for a little while. What that little while is, I don't know exactly. But for now, we know that in the long term, meaning twenty years down the road, when we start to see those twenty thousand sort of numbers. And, and again, it's not about the twenty thousand specifically, it's about how that twenty thousand interacts with the intersections themselves. Because that's what drives the capacity of roadways in your town is intersections, not roadway segments. Uh, we, it, it is showing that two lanes is likely going to be needed into the future. But we can probably get by with one lane for the time being, so it. What that year is, is hard to know and, and if, if it were me planning this and needing to understand what right-of-way we need. I'm going to say what plan for the wider right-of-way, we don't need to build all those lanes at the moment, but have that banked so we can build it when we need it. And we'll look at that here in a minute, I'm going to jump the gun on that, but I wanted to explain the one-way situation here because you'll see these cues. For one way, these are backing up and at times it backs up more than a quarter mile, which means it's going up into Cedar Street. And as a result of that, I'll pause this again. Because of the one way, uh, or sorry, because of the one lane, we have, uh, limited gaps, meaning less gaps. For other side streets that make their movements to get into that flow of traffic. So because we had, uh, less gaps in this, because we're only in one lane that's carrying a fair amount of traffic during a peak hour. Your church street, even though a good portion of your church street traffic already shifted down to Pine because Pine is now two-way. Uh, there's still some traffic on church coming from downtown that still wants to utilize, uh, the street system. Uh, but because there aren't many gaps in your travel going southbound, you start to see a queue build up here as well. That does queue up back past and go into town a little bit here. So there are some, and again, this is a twenty forty condition, so you can see what some of those issues are, if we don't get into a, a two-lane system. Uh, in twenty forty, you'll start to see these conditions where you still have queues backing up from Pine all the way up to Cedar. And on Church Street backing up into town, that's, that's going to be a given. And if we can maintain that delay on city streets. Will ITD be okay with that? Probably, if we're not affecting them, where it is, where it is going to affect them is right here where we have. Church Street that is backing up past one of their facilities, in this case, the northbound section of the couplet. Uh, that could be affecting. Operations here, if you have northbound traffic wanting to turn left here and not being able to, and then you have queues starting back up here. So those are potentials to just keep in mind. Sure, uh, local will have to direct me on what the name of these buildings are.
So Army Surplus is right at the top of, right there, where your pointer is, is Army Surplus.
And then Matchwood on the left.
And yeah, that's what they're.
This is Oak Street here, so with Oak Street, the, the proposal in the MTMP. Was to close this portion of Oak Street in between the couplet. And make this an active transportation use only, meaning pedestrians and bikes only. So this is a great little area that you'd be creative with how you create a nice vibrant location. Uh, for, uh, some active transportation use and how you utilize. This triangle space, you know, kind of the world's your oyster as far as that goes, uh, you know, you could see. Well. I'm just, in my mind, I think, oh, let's put some food trucks there, let's activate the space, have these great users there that can. Walk and bike through here and, and have some food and things as they make their way down downtown or back and forth.
Preston, whose property is that triangle there at the north end of the couplet, is that ITD's or is that the city's?
ITD.
So would, would ITD? Allow us to develop that in some way if it, if it's not being used for lanes of traffic? I, I, I don't, I don't assume you know the answer to that.
That's negotiable.
Yeah, so you can negotiate.
You can do exchanges between governmental entities without. Having to put a price to it without having to go to market to it.
But there's a possibility of there being some like pedestrian space in this unused ITD corridor, because it's not going to be a parking lot any longer, obviously. Um, I'm, I'm not asking you to commit to that, I'm just saying from a negotiation standpoint, this could be something that we benefit from in the future. Um, if it, if that does not have other uses for that.
Correct, and I would say similar example would be with downtown when they quit claim dated the streets back to the city.
Yeah.
The other thing I'll note here is. Because we are crossing a roadway here, uh, and we're, it's a fairly close distance between these two intersections, which is why we're not allowing any vehicles through here. So vehicles only have a right and right out on Oak Street in this location. Uh, we have a, a crossing that. Could look any number of different ways, depending on what the demand is, ends up being as a result of. This being close to vehicles and as population increases and things and as demand increases for active transportation users. Uh, there will be a need to do something more than just painted crosswalks most likely, and that could be anywhere from. Uh, just enhanced crossing from highly visible painting to, uh, flashing beacons to work tailor rap, rap, rapid flashing beacons. To pedestrian hybrid beacons, to pedestrian signals, uh, lots of different things you can do, uh. I'm just thinking outside the box here as well, given the short distance. There's not enough time, I would say, for pedestrians to go from. Cross Oak here and then make it all the way across over here on the same signal time or crossing time. Um, because it's a little bit too far for that walking speed, but for bikes who are traveling at a higher speed. There could be some coordination between them, if there were some sort of signal or, or beacon sort of situation. You could have those coordinated, so if it's actuated by a bicycle. It could give you a walk time or a ride time in this case, all the way across all of them, so there's lots of. Opportunity here that you could look into for that crossing. And that would tie in obviously to your, your east and west, uh, or sorry, your north and south, my multi-use path here. You can see pedestrians there walking along, having, having a good time. And use.
Preston, maybe you can confirm too, because I think there is some misunderstanding that with creating the couplet right now on Fifth Avenue. We are essentially five lanes, we have two lanes either direction with. Then a turning lane in the middle. What is envisioned in our concept and with the couplet, it's not retained five lanes and adding more lanes that would reduce the number of lanes on Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, so with, with the current concept on the screen right now and. Just to reiterate, this concept specifically as far as number of lanes was not in the MTMP. Um, it's explicitly spelled out saying, this is the couple, it's going to be one lane each direction, nor was it explicitly spelled out saying it would be two lanes each direction. Uh, knowing that there's going to have to be some coordination with ITD on that. But to Jennifer's point. Cedar, or sorry, US two fifth out up here is a five-lane cross-section. Why I'm having this lag. Uh, so you have two lanes in the southbound, two lanes in the northbound. And a center turn lane and it becomes a, just a left turn lane as you get to the intersections. So that cross-section is not intended to continue down through the couplet, that would then split, meaning. Uh, you'd either have one lane. Split here and one lane split here and gain a turn lane if you need it at the intersections. Or in the two-lane concept, it would be two lanes southbound here and two lanes northbound here. So you would never have a five-lane cross-section, right now up there, that cross-section up at. Just north of Cedar, this is an eighty-four, eighty-five foot crossing for a pedestrian to make at the signal. That, that is massive and that, I, I know, because I cross those all the time in my own hometown. That they're not comfortable to cross. Crossing a single lane or crossing even two lanes with one direction of travel is going to be much more comfortable to cross. Where you are only having to look in one direction to cross, you have limited your conflict points, things we've already talked about here. Uh, so that's, those are important. Important thing to point out, thanks Jennifer. Any questions on that before I change over to the two-lane concept?
No. Do you have an estimate of what the level of service would be at these intersections with the one-lane concept?
Yeah, uh, so the one-lane concept. The one-lane concept goes to your, your church. Your church, street and US two couple areas will be at an F in that condition because of those. Queues happening in that westbound condition, so that's what's driving your poor level of service there is your side streets. Which generally speaking wouldn't be a big issue if it was over on the city side, but since that middle section is and crossing over to your. Uh, the northbound couplets portion of it, that does become a little bit of an issue, uh, because it does start to block traffic in that, in that condition. Pine Street and the Pine Street Signal and US two, that is a level of service, uh, below a level of service C, so C or better.
Also Cedar was really backed up east of Fifth?
Yeah, Cedar, I don't have those conditions exactly, but it, it coming out of town, you have that movement in particular, you'll start to see. Uh, some big cues there and those, or those are things that are happening today, it'll just be exacerbated into the future. And. The. What will likely happen is people will start to utilize other alternatives, which is. Great part of the grid system is utilize the downtown network that we have, the avenues. And start to filter down to other roadways to Pine, for instance, that has quite a bit of capacity now by changing it to two-way. Um, the, the Boyer intersection, Boyer and US two is at a level sort of C. In that condition, in both the two-lane and the one-lane.
Which is acceptable to ITD.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, and it's teetering on that point of a C or a D depending on, it's kind of, because things are based on a, a delay. Seconds per vehicle and their threshold from a C to a D is thirty-five seconds, so. You could be at like thirty-four seconds, which is a C, but you could be ten, two seconds more and then be a D over that point, so we're right around that area. Which right now is, is functioning.
And to reiterate, they agreed to a level D on their system in the two thousand fifteen agreement.
So you'll see a lot of the same here, same, same fly-through. Don't see much difference here, same, uh, cross-sections as well. You'll see the same cross-section at Boyer. And what you start to see is a, a, a lack of cues, so you'll remember at this point in the one-lane version. This queue right here was backing up past church and church had that standing queue here going past. Over the northbound section. Because you introduced two lanes through here, we now can accommodate twice as many vehicles through that section. And, and it's not, it's not even about the throughput, it's not about how many vehicles we can get through, it's about how many we can store. So by doubling your lanes, you double the amount of storage you've, you have for your vehicles. So that's really what's, it's really not changing much in the, um, level service at, at Boyer. But it's changing a lot in level service to the north, especially at church. Mayor, you want me to answer that?
Sure.
Let me back up here a little bit. Okay, so you're asking about. Oh, yeah. Oops, jumped too far. This is being jumpy. So this is, what you see here is the proposed condition, so this is a, this is a. Three-legged signalized intersection, so we, we don't add a, another leg to this, this stays the way it is in its current three-lane, three-legged. Condition, but now we just add the signal there and add two-way traffic here. So instead of just being one-way eastbound, we now reduce westbound back into this signal. Uh, this, this whole intersection is signalized, so you. Right here. These, these colored bars are, are basically the stop bars of your intersection, so cars come up. The, right now, the model is showing that that's a red light, so cars are coming up and stopping at the red light at the stop bar. And right now, in this phase of the signal, it's a green light, so that stop bar is green, so the eastbound traffic is currently moving, uh, because they have the green light.
So you're showing three lanes on Pine there, both sides.
This is, this is a turn lane, it's actually one lane in this direction, but it's. You have a right turn lane and a through movement.
Thank you.
Goes back for a short period.
Mister Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could councillor rule please maybe lean in or adjust the mic, we can't hear online the questions.
Amanda, it's not one of the councillors that's asking a question.
Okay, thanks, sorry, when Preston's answering questions and online, we don't know what the question is, so if we could just. Just a note, thanks.
Yeah, and I just remind the public that, uh, we're having questions from the council at this moment and after, um, this next, uh. Phase of the presentation will open up to, uh, questions that we've received from the public.
Okay, this is a good, this is a good snapshot of a, a pedestrian crossing, or in this case, there are bikes that are crossing at the moment. So bikes are crossing, which means we are stopping traffic, uh, in whatever fashion that ends up being. Uh, in this case, you see that as a result of that stop, uh, of being able to stop because of the bikes, traffic is starting to queue up. And because of the two lanes, we're able to accommodate that queue within the existing right-of-way of our two-lane facility. If this were back to the one-lane facility and we saw this condition, this would be backing up into Cedar. So I just want to make sure everyone is very clear that while you don't see major differences in level of service. At intersections, you do see some unintended consequences of the one lane with queue, queuing spilling back into other intersections. Uh, with that one lane, so just be aware, I guess is my, my biggest point there.
The why is there? So with the two-lane, there's now a proposed, uh, signal at church? Or I'm sorry, that's oak.
This is oak, yep, and this is just a pedestrian or bike crossing.
Got it.
Yep. Okay. We can probably jump back now to. Presentation, man, I'm going to throw it back to you for sharing.
That's full screen for you guys?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, the bottom note there in the yellow box, thank you very much, Preston, for Hugh and I know. Your entire team that helped put those simulations together to help enhance the understanding, um, maybe you could just. Reiterate, I guess, the time of year and that we're not looking necessarily at worst case, um, and, and kind of to that point that we intentionally underplan to ensure that we're not overbuilding. Um, could you kind of speak to the time of year those volumes were applied for the simulation?
Yes, so twenty forty conditions, so seventeen years down the road, so applying that growth rate. Per year to our existing traffic volumes to get that twenty forty condition and that is based on. May conditions, traffic volumes wise, so not your peak of the peak in summer day, but kind of your peak of typical. Uh, typical days in, in your. It's not even off-peak, but your kind of typical school peaks in your May timeframe.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, this is your slide two, Preston.
Okay. All right, so what, we talked about congestion, there's good things and there are bad things about congestion. There, some of the positives are, well, we reduce speeds because people have a hard time moving the way they want to and maneuvering the way they want to. And as a result of slow-moving vehicles, you do have a reduction in severity of incidents or crashes that, that could occur. As a result of those reduced speeds. You do have gaps that, uh, that can, uh, occur or lengthen as a result of slower-moving vehicles. you do have gaps that uh that can uh occur or lengthen as a result of slower-moving vehicles, whereas faster-moving vehicles uh, you know, cover that gap quicker. And it's harder for side streets to make those movements and pedestrians, bicycles to make those their movements without understanding or gauging that speed with uh less congestion. Uh, but again, we're not talking about high speeds on these roadways. We're talking about thirty five miles per hour speeds on these roadways or less, depending on how we end up getting to that point. Uh, the, one of the other positives that um maybe we didn't talk about here is that and and this can go both ways because the last bolt on the negatives is about impacted businesses. So there there is some benefit to congestion with businesses. There are more eyes and windows if you're moving at a slower pace uh to retail and things that are on the side of us of the road. So there there are some retail users that will like slower-moving vehicles going past their businesses. Other negatives. There there tends to be some frustration that comes with congestion, which can increase the number of incidents or crashes because people will get frustrated and want to shoot gaps and be more risky in their behaviors. Um, they they also will tend to get frustrated and find other alternatives, other roadways, meaning instead of staying on US two or fifth or fifth Ave, they will use local streets, neighborhood streets to do cut-throughs and and to do different things to get away from that congestion. Air pollution or greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, so this is more of a sustainability thing. We know that stop and go vehicles create more greenhouse gas emissions. We know that stopped vehicles create more greenhouse gas emissions than the cars that are continually moving at an efficient speed. So that is a downside of that as well. Uh, and then we talked about that business side of things already.
Okay, back to goals. Just uh wanted to highlight these again in uh the conversations that we've been having about the data component and the solutions moving forward. The goals that are underlined are really leading us uh to that balanced approach as well as goal eight noting that we um agreed in our multimodal plan that we need to proactively plan for an increase uh in demand. And I think that um as we move forward with our comprehensive plan update, you know, taking a look at these goals again is certainly a healthy exercise and continuing to keep them in the forefront of our decisions. So now we're transitioning from or on our final section. I said at the beginning, this is a four-part uh presentation. We're on the fourth section, which is that long-term east-west connection. Uh, but before we talk about the long term, which I'm gonna have Preston do, I'll give just a very short bit and reminder that we have a short-term solution that is also in the plan. It's figure twenty-two. And really the only change from the condition that we have today versus the short-term plan that's in the multimodal plan is moving the signal that's at church down to pine to provide that uh two-way travel on Pine Street between fourth and fifth with the intent of really providing back to that layered system of networks, providing a viable pathway for east-west traffic uh to help avoid what's happening with cut-through traffic through South Sandpoint. There are a lot of different ways to try and address that problem. On Lake Street, there were some stop signs put in to help detract people from going on Lake Street uh vehicles, but allowing it to be more of a friendly route for bicycles and pedestrians, which uh is included as a route within the multimodal plan. Uh, there are ways to put do not enter signs on Superior at First Avenue, which we had a lot of conversations about and included in the short-term solution. The other aspect of this is really looking at that uh bridge and first solution. So we have our downtown revitalization uh phase three project coming forward. And so when we uh anticipate getting that from concept to design, continuing our revitalization on First Avenue that we started a couple of years ago and moving that project south, looking at that intersection so that we're planning for the future in that regard from an infrastructure perspective. And widening those sidewalks in this uh short term. So as the downtown revitalization project moves forward, there'll be a lot more community involvement in that final design and what that looks like. That's just an example of how we take a concept that's in the multimodal plan and we advance it through with more details and more certainty for uh the community and the adjacent businesses. Um, we also have some turn restrictions on pine and Euclid for everyone in our community that has been heading southbound on Fifth Avenue. The uh community feedback we heard is it's it's really quite a hazard actually to be coming around that curve and um having someone stopped in the middle of the highway trying to take a left turn, given the limited sight visibility there. So again, those were really community-driven requested changes. The signal at one interesting point that I appreciate the mayor uh pointing out is that when we were designing uh the project with ITD in between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen, the city actually strongly requested that we not have the signal at church. We wanted it at Pine Street at that time and the data didn't support it. ITD ran the data and said that the intersection failed uh and it it wasn't a viable option. That's why we have the signal at church. So uh moving forward through the multimodal planning effort, because this location was still a concern by our community because the uh bottleneck, if you will, where vehicles on pine have to go north on fourth and then turn left on church to get out into Dover and that's having a unintended consequence in our South Sandpoint area. Um, our team OTAC as well as Preston and and his folks uh spent a lot of time and effort re-looking at that data. And we had multiple meetings with ITD and actually handed over all of the raw data to them for their signal engineers and analysts to review our team's work to see if they agreed because they were also a little concerned that back ten years ago, their data said that it didn't work. Our data proves that it does. Uh, the result of that and Preston could certainly answer questions to this is in our multimodal plan on page fifty-eight. It does note that uh with the implementation of this, that that intersection at pine and fifth will function worse than it does today, meaning the level of service from that technical perspective goes down when we do this. And the sole reason for that is because today it is not a controlled intersection, it's free flow. So anything we do with that location is gonna make it worse. Um, but again, we're really doing it to help provide that east-west connection, which I do want to note that in the two thousand twelve uh community-driven plan, the downtown streets uh plan and guide really emphasized the importance of an east-west connection as well. Preston, anything else you want to add on our short-term solution?
No, I think you hit things pretty well there. Uh, maybe one note that is really critical is that the with that signal at pine and fifth now and it's closer proximity to Boyer where that signal sits today. It's gonna be really important that those two signals are talking to one another or coordinated really well, because as we know today that that queue does back up to pine already. Um, so it's and based on our modeling, we can show that it works if they have those well-coordinated. So that will be important as we work with ITD to make sure that they get those signals talking really well one another.
Great, thank you. As far as timing goes, I just for council, a reminder, uh, the design for the signal at fifth and pine is in this year's fiscal year budget. So we are actively moving forward, engaging engineers to design that signal, sign an agreement with ITD to um solidify their review process in that, uh, but it is city funds that would be paying for the design and the signal. And the reason for that is again, it's a city request. It is in no way, shape or form uh requested by ITD for their system to function. In fact, all of the signals on US two are because they fundamentally serve our system. So uh if a truly uh car-centric and typical highway uh environment would be no signals that would achieve a mobility goal for vehicles, but because we need to get vehicles out through our town, that's why we need controlled intersections based upon uh the the volume, uh similar to what we did at pine and division a few years ago. So as many people will recall, pine and division, we had a lot of safety issues and a lot of near misses as well as incidents, and it was really unsafe for our pedestrians and schoolkids uh that were coming in and out of school. And so the first level, if you will, of um control that we put at that intersection was making it a four-way stop. So rather than putting in a signal or a roundabout or some of those other costly uh measures, it's it's a phased approach. And right now, that intersection, I believe the last we checked it through um one of our recent analysis is it, it's functioning at an A. So um, you know, hopefully that it continues to do that despite the increase in demands. And so similar uh at these signals, it's the volume that's requiring signals at some locations. Anything to add on that, Preston?
No, we got it.
Okay. So responsible growth, uh responsible planning for growth in the next twenty years, we need to address really two things. A, growth in the region and the city and B, our citizens' concerns. So not only do we have this aspect of ADT and some of the projections that uh Preston went over, what we fundamentally heard through our multimodal planning efforts from one-on-one conversations to workshops to surveys is just over and over again. These concerns that are listed here, one through eight. The multimodal plan includes more. But these are the key takeaways, I would say. Uh, so I'm gonna just briefly go over them really quick and then pass it back over to Preston to go over how the plan intends to resolve these eight factors. Uh, pedestrian safety crossing at US two and Boyer due to that skewed intersection, Preston uh reminded everyone that having those tee-up is really the safest uh solution there. Safety concerns for all users due to the alignment of the community trail at US two and Boyer. And safety concerns due to that location of pine and Boyer intersection and how close it is to US two and Boyer. Our neighborhood concerns of cut-through traffic east-west through South Sandpoint. Frustration about the signal timing at church. I can't tell you how many calls we get at the city saying, why don't you just change that signal? Um, the timing's terrible. Uh, per our agreement, that's not an option. Uh, and we all know that during the um peak seasons during summer, it's often backed up all the way to Joel's at Second Avenue on church. So frustration about one-way section of Pine Street between fourth and fifth and wanting to avoid the multiple turns. Uh, the failure of the bridge and First Avenue, all users, or as some people call it dysfunction junction. And number eight, concerns that the future of US two may become similar to that section north of Cedar. For many, many years, we've been saying we don't want that. So this list handed over to Preston and his technical team as well as OTAC and their experts as well. Figure twenty-three is attempting to solve those eight things. It's not just about volume and how we're handling cars. It was really intended to look at this list and come up with resolutions to all of them, which is why in one figure, we're seeing uh various solutions at Bridge and First and Superior. Um, Preston can speak more to it. The one quick note I would make before handing it over back to the phased approach of controlled intersections, I think I can speak for the entire community on this, which I rarely try to do. But I don't think anybody wants signals at Superior and First or at Pine and First. The goal isn't that we're preferring signals. It's that at the point at which the system is no longer functioning and we have to have some form of a controlled intersection. Uh, what does that solution look like? And so Preston, maybe you could start on that um bottom right-hand side and kind of work your way uh northwest, if you will, and talk about the various things that you looked at at those intersections.
Sure. So Superior Street and First Ave. Uh, it's a funky intersection. There's some weird movements going on and it's controlled in a a strange way as well, which makes it confusing in general how and it it's a gateway into and out of town. Uh, which makes it even more difficult that you have users who are coming in for the first time oftentimes who are not familiar with the network and are confused as they process intersections. So there are some recommendations to restrict some movements there in the short term. And in the long term, you do see a signal there. So that's a when warranted situation. That's not a you, you shall do this. This is a if if you get to the point of war of the volume of warranty, then we need to put a signal in here to control things, still with some restricted movements. Restricted movements are there to keep the cut-through from occurring from Superior kind of coming off of the byway and going into Superior uh into the South Sandpoint area. And just kind of as a side note, that's a, there's about two thousand uh trips a day that are cutting through there. And I know some of those are local trips, but in general, there's two thousand volume going west uh or on that western side of that intersection. If we were to do nothing and keep that the way it is today, that would increase to about five thousand in twenty forty, so more than double. And I don't think any of us want that in that neighborhood. Um, that's, that's not the purpose of Superior at that point. That is, that is a local street to the west of First Ave and we want to maintain that. In order to maintain that, we need to restrict some movements and force the general public to the north on First Ave to get to pine to our new uh two-way arterial. Well, going up to uh pine and first, Amanda mentioned that today that's an always stop. And as we um convert to two-way, that portion of pine is two-way already today. But as that continues to increase in traffic as a result of that being two-way all the all the way through, that will likely as well warrant a signal in the future. Um, and when we say long term, we're generally thinking in the fifteen to twenty-year range is generally how we're thinking through these. Uh, and generally, that's what's warranting these conditions is that are those years out into the future. Um, jumping up onto first and bridge. We didn't talk about the short-term condition in that, but the short-term condition there is to restrict movements there and that would be from westbound heading on Bird Street going to southbound. Well, that left turn movement causes a lot of issues there. And by restricting that movement with certain uh barriers on first Ave, whether they're planter uh barriers or some other temporary form that can be moved out during off-peak seasons. So this, that can be a temporary uh just peak season condition where we have those barriers in place to restrict those movements and those can look nice and, you know, they can be troughs with flowers or whatever you want to create for that condition. In the long term, there needs to be something more than that. And it also comes into play for your pedestrian and bicycle activity in this downtown area and getting those pedestrians and bikes over to the beach in a safe manner. And by having this condition of closing first Ave, it creates a um, of, I'm calling it a void because it right now it looks like a void between those two orange elbow areas of that intersection. That becomes basically a pedestrian plaza that uh kind of like a a festival area that could be used for all sorts of things or could just be used for bicycle and pedestrian activity to cross through. Uh, but it becomes a nice area to uh liven up and and have a safe crossing. And at the same time, have more efficient flow in and out of bridge beach area as well as the downtown area on the other side. Uh, let's see, let's move over to, we'll go up to Oak Street, work our way down. So Oak Street, we talked about in the simulations where that portion in between the couplet area becomes bike and pedestrian zone only. So no vehicles in that section. Uh, the pine and fifth uh convert to one way. So that's the the couplet in general where we have one way northbound and one way southbound between the two split couplets. And then uh pine, uh, okay, so that section between uh the two pine signals, so between number one and then Boyer over there. That becomes two-way and and we wanted to call that out because I did, that is a difference from the original curve that ITV had put together that that was gonna maintain a one-way street through there. Which really wasn't conducive to good circulation for us. It caused a lot of out-of-direction travel. And we wanted to maintain that and that good east-west connection there. So maintaining a two-way travel through that. And then lastly, the the Boyer realignment um to clean things up there from short spacing between the intersections that creates some unsafe conditions that creates some very congested conditions with very long queues into the future that we're trying to clean up with this realignment. I think that summarizes most of everything.
Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, for Amanda or Preston, I I had heard something about the bike lane. With this being the long-term planning, can you show us where the bike lanes would be uh if you're on South Sandpoint? Or if you're just south of Highway two, or if you're just north of Highway two, how would you get down to City Beach via bicycle?
Um, I can try and take that one and then Preston can certainly chime in if needed. The uh route for bicycles in that's in our figure in appendix A to get to City Beach is actually, there's two routes. So the city has for a long time said that Oak Street is our primary route uh east-west to First Avenue and then south on First Avenue to get to City Beach. However, uh, a lot of folks that live in South Sandpoint, or if you're over there by City Hall, for example, uh, going up to Oak isn't um always the preferred route. So sticking more on lake uh was a result of our planning efforts would be the primary routes for bicycles. Um, and then we have a Um and then we have a number of routes actually throughout that entire corridor for pedestrians. Uh almost every section there ends up being a pedestrian route. And then our pedestrian priority network route provides for sidewalk connectivity from the west side all the way to City Beach.
Thank you.
Any other questions or things you want to add, Preston?
I don't think so.
Actually, I have a question, Preston, from our prior workshops that we hosted. There were a lot of concerns about at that bridge and first intersection. We'll have to take a deep dive, but um that southbound traffic on First that's north of Bridge Street, how are they gonna get out of town?
Yeah, so there, the the nice part about the downtown area is you do have your grid system. So you have second Ave, third Ave, fourth Ave as your north-south connections. And and then you have Church and Oak is your east-west and Cedar. So now that, without that connection on First Ave, you now have the the option of second, third, or fourth, and you'll have opportunities to connect to Pine Street from any of those three locations.
So this is a quick summary. Comparing the prior, I put in quotes, curve compared to the east-west connection. Uh so the design project, the ITD design project that the city and ITD coordinated on between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen compared to the long-term east-west connection. So on the far-left column is a list uh just trying to capture and summarize uh the various factors that played into the east-west connection and how those concerns from the community were not addressed through the curve project. Even though both concepts um are both the east-west uh connection as well as the designed curve, both have couplets, they both split northbound and southbound traffic for all of the reasons that we previously discussed. Um there's a couple of things that the curve didn't achieve that the east-west does. So I'll just highlight these really quickly and we could certainly touch on them in more detail if we need to. But US two at Pine, so it's not a controlled intersection in the curve. No signal. Pine was a one-way from Boyer to Fourth. And the east-west connection, it's a controlled signal as Preston just reviewed, and it's two-way between Boyer and First Avenue. Uh if you think of uh that section of Pine right now, today, it's almost like putting a valve on the system and closing the valve. So it's sending traffic to another direction. We're trying to open that valve with the east-west connection. The Boyer intersection in the curve project was laid out in the same manner as I mentioned earlier that it is today. And it impacted Dubs. So it provided connection to uh South Boyer and it impacted Dubs. In the east-west connection uh that's in the multimodal plan, there's no access, as Preston mentioned, from what would be westbound on US two. Um and actually, there's no um Preston, you can certainly talk more about the access at South Boyer. I know we had a right on to US two from South Boyer, but that connection, I think the skew still of that intersection without impacting Dubs was a bit challenging. So we looked at the area between Winter Ridge and Dubs to help provide some of that connectivity through the plan. Uh US two and Church uh in the curve design was a signal in the east-west connection. There is no signal. This was a big one for our community and reading back on that history, we were really frustrated that Oak Street was that short section uh and provided access for vehicles. In the east-west connection, it's closed. As Preston, I think, went over in great detail uh the opportunities and and why we chose to close that. Uh Boyer and Pine uh in the curve example, it's the same as today. It's really close to US two. The east-west connection, by moving that intersection of Boyer further to the east, we're not only fixing the skew alignment that's noted below, but we're also helping to address that issue at Pine and Boyer as well. US two Community Trail, big point of contention during the curve uh feedback did not care for uh the safety concerns that we had for pedestrians at the poor visibility that we experienced today and the skew still existed. The realignment of the Community Trail and the east-west connection is intended to resolve that connectivity. And Dubbs Field, as it's often referred to. So the curve project again did not impact it. Uh they're restricted, as I we discussed, from impacting a park. However, the city has the ability to say it's okay to impact the park. So uh we in the east-west connection utilized a significant portion of the park. The T-ball, as it's currently used for primarily today, doesn't require that big of a footprint. Uh property acquisition. So the curve project had multiple businesses that needed to be acquired um as well as parking lots, et cetera, uh to accomplish the plan. And the east-west connection, really, we charged Preston with that long list here and we said, go forth with solutions that have the least amount of impact on businesses as possible. And with that priority in mind, we resulted in a plan that uh impacted, when adopted, a single business, which was Melody Muffler. And they uh seem to be, I think I can say this for them, quite excited to uh maybe retire at some point soon. So they were not opposed to being acquired through the east-west connection, quite the opposite. On the curve project, uh it did account for two lanes in east direction plus turn lanes. We did communicate that we were concerned about that. And the east-west connection, as Preston mentioned, uh from a cartoon perspective, we showed that there's lanes. However, um they were not designed in the east-west connection uh by any means, as where the curve project was designed. And both solutions include uh complete streets features. Anything else, Preston, you want to add on this list that I may have missed?
Nope, you got it.
So on February first, city council made the decision to purchase the Dubbs property. As many of you will recall, that decision was coupled with a request to amend figure twenty-three simply to add what connection to South Boyer would look like, as Preston previously described, teen up the intersection with South uh Boyer and US two. So still a concept, but we did verify functionality to make sure, as Preston mentioned, that this movement wouldn't negatively affect the uh Boyer-US two intersection to make sure that was still a viable path forward. So that was the only change to the multimodal plan uh that we wanted to articulate the importance of that connection to South Boyer so that Washington Elementary could still be accessed and the festival and all of those residents still have that connectivity. As we're in the adopted plan, again, the priority was no impact to Dubs. So since then, as the mayor highlighted at the very beginning of this presentation and workshop, that there's been a bit of confusion since uh the city made the decision to acquire that property and trying to address some of that confusion about figure twenty-three, we as staff have tried to incorporate what we heard the most from council, city council from. And so again, we s- the revised um figure twenty-three includes that connectivity to South Boyer Avenue from US two. So that's the same as what was presented on February first. Since February first, based upon city council feedback, we've done two additional uh changes to it. That's just simply to remove all references to travel lanes. So we've stated it, the plan, the multimodal plan doesn't talk about number of lanes. So to further bring home the point that that was never the intent of the multimodal plan to design number of lanes on a state-owned highway, all lane references are gone in the recently updated, not adopted, but just recently updated draft. And to provide some notations to further clarify the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety and connectivity. That is stated throughout the entire multimodal plan, from the vision to the goals um all the way through to every concept that is included in the plan. So the intent is to come back to city council on May third at their regular meeting and request that they consider amending the multimodal plan to update it, to reflect the changes that may occur as a result of the purchase of the Dubbs uh property. And uh at that time, as the mayor mentioned earlier, as with majority of decisions by city council, that is when we take uh public comment on um potential decisions. So again, this session was really more from an informational perspective. Uh update, the updated version, this is it. It was included in the staff report. So again, all lane references are gone. You still see on the lower left there the connection through the Dubbs property as a result of the acquisition. And then up here on the right-hand side is the reference to Appendix B, which is the complete streets policy as well as just noting that the ultimate roadway and intersection geometry will be determined by further data and that analysis from ITD. So kind of back to this location where we were contemplating some of the amazing things that could uh happen in that space. Roadway geometry, as Preston can speak to, is really looking at not only just the Wayne lips, Wayne, I can't even speak anymore, I've been talking so much, the lane widths. Um but also the shoulder size. Where are our bike lanes going to go? How will parking uh interface or not interface? How will stormwater exist? What type of trees are we going to be planting? So all of those levels of detail that as this project potentially progresses in the future, should money for design actually be funded? Um that's when we really start working through that level of detail. And we have to look at the geometry component of it is specific to turn movements, for example. So how those lanes and turn lanes and the spacing, how far back they're set from a signal? Um it it's really looking at truly a technical engineering perspective as well as all of those other components to a complete street that are so important to our community. Preston, do you want to say anything else about roadway geometry that I men- I failed to mention?
I do not.
Okay. So as a reminder from earlier in the presentation today, I think um there's many, many examples that support couplet solutions. A couplet solution was uh back to, we kind of have three options. Get rid of all the traffic through our town. But when most of the traffic is originating through our town, that's gonna take some pretty significant decisions. Option two is to just simply widen the highway, which I don't know anyone in our community that's advocated for that. And the third option is to split traffic, like many communities have done in downtowns and yet still achieve that Walker's Paradise. And this is the last slide, which is just a snapshot from the staff report that is noting what I just basically stated, which is that the purpose of amending the figure twenty-three concept was just to inform the beginning of a redesign process um about how US two connects with our city streets. And ITD's current design solution is still a couplet. It's the designed solution that we agreed to in the exhibit that we showed, which is through the railroad right-of-way. Previous railroad right-of-way now purchased by ITD. And the city's request for advancing this redesign potentially to ITD uh is to provide the community and the businesses with certainty. So instead of reading the words, I'm just gonna say it really simply. The idea is, yes, we have this concept in a multimodal plan. The community wants to dive in and give more feedback on the devils and the details. So we all want to talk about those details. The city doesn't have money, nor is it our highway, to start that design process. The intent is to say, ITD, we would really like to have a design for this that we're all okay with. So can we start that process? And that requires funding, obviously. And so um and it's their highway. So it's relaunching, redesigning that process that we did back in twenty-eleven and twenty-thirteen that we never really came to a great place with. So how can we advance that? And then the city's concept, as reflected in twenty-three, is really not just about resolving what's happening on a state system, but it's about resolving our citizens' concerns regarding cut-through traffic as well as safety pedestrians and bicycle safety. So hopefully, all of that uh enhanced some understanding. And I think, Mr. Mayor, do we have a a recess before questions or I'll hand it back over to you?
We're gonna take a quick recess. Um and then we'll come back to uh questions from the public. So we will reconvene here at about nine twenty-eight. Okay, we're reconvened here at almost nine thirty. Um thank you, everyone, for sticking it out thus far. And we've got a lot of really thoughtful questions from the public and staff has consolidated them as best as possible. Of course, many of them have already been answered and we will try to answer those that have uh not been answered. So at this point, I'm gonna hand it off to uh Jennifer.
I'm gonna whisper in her that just to clarify it for you. He's wanting to know what the the current purchase of Dubs will, will they look up doing the intersection that have four year old street through.
Preston, do you want to start with one I handed you?
Yeah, I'll just do this one to Jennifer. So this was a uh it's a printed-off copy from the Virginia Transportation Research Council regarding guidelines for using streetlight data for planning tasks. And the portion that was highlighted here, and this is about utilizing this big data, the streetlight cellphone data for planning purposes of estimating ADT origin destination trips, traffic flow, turning movements at intersections and truck traffic. And the portion that was highlighted here states the evaluation results were mixed. The latest, talking about the results of their research of this, the latest streetlight uh AADT estimates and showed relatively small absolute percentage errors. Whereas using the streetlight metrics to estimate E-trips, which is origin destination traffic counts on roadway segments and at intersections and truck traffic did not show a relatively low and stable error rate. Large percentage errors were often found to be associated with lower volumes. Volume levels estimated based on the streetlight metrics. In addition, using the streetlight metrics from individual periods uh as the input for estimating these traffic measures resulted in large errors. Instead, the aggregation of data from multiple multi-periods helped to reduce the errors, especially for low-volume conditions. Depending on project purposes, the aggregation can be based on metrics of multiple days, weeks, or months. Uh so yeah, yeah, good, good comment here regarding, we talked about our streetlight data looking at origin destination and distribution of trips and pass-through. Uh so what this is saying uh from the research from this institution is that streetlight essentially shouldn't be used to give you intersection turning movement counts directly. And it it shouldn't be used to estimate truck traffic or really absolute values of any of those sort of traffics, which is, which is why we don't use it in that way. We use streetlight data as an order of magnitude and use it in terms of percentages of traffic rather than saying it is this much traffic on this roadway. Because we know it's just a sampling. Not everyone has a cellphone. Not everyone has a cellphone turned on. Not everyone has it enabled to to send signals. So there's lots of things coming into play where it's not a hundred percent sample size of what you're pulling from. And the other reason why we pull a whole twelve months of data is for that reason that they talk about to reduce that that air, because you do get a lot of air if you're just looking at a day timeframe versus a whole year, three hundred sixty-five days timeframe, aggregating that together to get you an average. Uh which is why we use it for order of magnitude of generally what's that percentage of trips.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. We've got a good, probably twenty, thirty questions. I would note too that we um had a few questions that were submitted and we've had a couple individuals um email us and tell us that they're gonna pull their questions because they were answered already in the presentation and and they appreciated that. So we have gotten a couple of those emails, but um and and talking with uh Preston here as well, there's a few of these that are detailed questions. We don't necessarily have the all the data right now. So some of these, we may not be able to answer tonight because we don't have the data to be a future process. And as possible with some of these questions, what we may hear back is where we will have to answer back in in writing because we don't write now, now, tonight with a quick answer, but we might, you know, in the next week. So and if that is the case, and we go to any written answers, those will be posted on our website connections on our social media so people can see those. So with that, um first question um is uh from a community member in the room asking about the acquisition of Dubs and does it potentially modify the Boyer crossing of Highway Two? So uh Amanda and Mayor, um maybe we can go back again to that intersection and that question about Boyer crossing at Highway Two with the purchase of Dubs.
Absolutely. I'm gonna share my screen and get that presentation back up so we can flip through. Full screen now on your end?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the zoomed-in section. So the answer is yes. So the answer is yes. So the purchase of dubs. This alignment in the proposed amended figure twenty-three would reflect this connectivity. At this location, providing as Preston previously addressed a left turn movement from US two southbound on South Boyer. As well as the right in and the right out. So yes, the acquisition. Allowed for this versus. Here, you can see that connectivity is not shown.
Amanda, I I think at least how I interpreted that question, it was more about. Are we going to revisit this?
Yes.
This connection like this. Is how I gathered that.
Yes, then I'll hand that over to you, Preston. Thank you for clarifying.
So. The the reason that. The the importance of this improvement here is about the east-west connection. It's about continuing that. East-west grid that was lost for so long because of the one-way. And reducing the cut-through through the neighborhoods. And what this doesn't do is help fix the issues of the short distance between. Now, or still with the pine intersection here. And boyer, you still have that issue there where you, we would essentially still be having the issue of. Long queues coming up here because of this issue here. So it doesn't fix one of the problems at the intersection. So I would say, no, likely this does not. Bring that back into light.
I think a couple other factors with that, Preston, just to chime in is it would potentially require additional. Rightaway acquisition as well as doesn't address the skewed factors that were resolved by pushing it to the east, if that's a fair statement.
Yep, yeah, we'd be affecting more businesses, I guess, over in that. Or in here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Amanda, I'm going to stay right there in that that intersection again with another question. With a question about traffic considerations and concerns. Right there again at boyer and highway two. And wondering about considerations or data that were taken under advisement regarding pedestrian traffic. From South Boyer across Highway Two. And. There's a second question on seeking to understand how moving the traffic light. Change, how how would that affect? Potentially morning and afternoon school drop-off and pickup for Washington Elementary.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to try to tackle that one in conjunction with Preston? So the. I'll handle the second part of the question, I think, first, if that's okay. I'm going to go back to another slide we have at the beginning. Maybe Preston, you can speak to that Ella connection as well.
Yeah. So the Ella connection is is really what's going to help. Continue our connectivity to South Sandpoint in addition to this portion of South Boyer, but I know that there is some. It does get cut a little bit there with in that boyer section from North Boyer to South Boyer. So the new Ella connection that's shown on the screen there, it's hard to see with that small figure, but that. This is a new connection that is now providing that good north-south connection, north and south of US two. To South Sandpoint and obviously over to to Washington Elementary. But that is a, that does not exist today. So today that is a dead end. So that that increases connectivity from north to south. And then what was the other portion of the?
The data component of pedestrians at the boyer intersection. My, I know we've counted pedestrian data at several locations throughout town. As a result of some of our developments in the pipeline. Do you recall if we have pedestrian data at that location?
Yeah, we do. So anywhere where we have. Pedestrian data, any, anything that we've collected recently in traffic volumes. Includes traffic volumes and pedestrians, number of pedestrians and bikes crossing to crosswalks or as a bike, if they're in the road. Acting as a vehicle in the road. So those are all included into the analysis. What you probably couldn't see in the simulation is you'll see the pedestrians actually crossing the crosswalks at that intersection at the realigned boyer. As well as the community path next to it. So those are all being accounted for, meaning. Cars needing to yield to those pedestrians at crosswalks and the resulting delay that would occur to vehicles as a result of pedestrians being in the crosswalks. Is being accounted for in the analysis. Thank you.
I'm going to keep us at the same spot. I'm trying to get these grouped together so we can stay in the same location.
Great.
There is a question regarding boyer and highway two again. And how travel on boyer, boyer across highway two will be accommodated without a traffic light at that intersection.
At boyer and highway two, how there would not be a traffic signal?
Correct. I think there's not an understanding of of what you're doing with a traffic signal.
I see. Okay, so and yeah, there still is a traffic signal at boyer and US two. It's just shifted to the east. So it's currently here where my cursor is today and it simply gets shifted further to the east. So if you were on boyer coming from the north, you would take a left onto pine to be at your intersection with US two.
Thank you. Another question is asking about impacts by limiting north-south access. From boyer again, crossing highway two.
Yeah, Preston, correct me if I'm wrong here, please, but my sense is it was trying to enhance that connectivity, not eliminate it. So I I think that. Again, maybe just a little bit of confusion. It's not trying to eliminate any crossing here. It's shifting the crossing to this location.
Shifting the crossing to the location and with the amendment that is is proposed to be put in the empty M P is. Is that, oops, sorry. Yeah, there you go. Is enhancing that access now by allowing left turns in in this direction. So this is, this will be what we call a three-quarter access, meaning all movements but left turns out would be allowed. And if if you want to do a left turnout to go southwest on US two. You're likely going to Ella to the new signal that would be at that location, depending on where you're coming from. If you're further south Sandpoint, maybe using division or or Ella. So those are your options.
From a pedestrian perspective, Preston, could you give a very brief explanation? Because I've heard you do a really good job on it before about how pedestrians crossing at an actual signal is safer than having. For example, an R F B at this location or a flashing beacon or some other method.
Yeah, so well, in general sidewalks here, crosswalk over the the that portion of boyer. Sidewalk continuing up. And then you come to your intersection and then you have a multi-use path on this side. Doing the same thing, coming up to the intersection, crossing at the crosswalk there, crossing the crosswalk here. Having a crosswalk here and connecting to sidewalk on this side. And then sidewalks on this side, crossing on this end. So it's all interconnected. And then when when you have the opportunity to have a crossing at a signal, you want to take advantage of that. Rather than having something mid-block and close to the intersection because then you start to mess up your operations in general. You don't want to have a a protected crossing for pedestrians and bikes within, you know, a hundred feet of an intersection. Where there's already queues backing up past it and causing issues with. Queues backing up into your signal there and causing that issue. So let's keep the pedestrians at the marked crosswalks to get their walk time built into your signal, where your walk phase, your. Person indication and then your countdown walk time on your pet head, pedestrian heads. So those are, those are things that motorists shouldn't be. I I know it's not all the time and you can't say that for any crossing location, but motor should be watching for those. Locations, they're going to stop a red light in most cases and. Right turns need to yield to those in there and left turns need to yield to pedestrians. So it would, it would act as a protected crossing on all four legs of that intersection. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. We are going to go a bit west on highway two then with a question about do the. Does the concept, do the concepts anticipate widening highway two? In the direction from dubs to Newport.
Like, I can take that one. The answer is no. We have a separate figure for that and there's no lane contemplation from the west.
Okay, while we are on in west then of dubs. There is a question regarding the additional traffic. That will result from the new apartments at Ridley Village and Highway Two. And what was planned in this concept to allow for ease of entry? From Ridley Village on to Highway Two.
So our concept doesn't. Contemplate that development specifically in respect to that development. Became about after we adopted the multimodal plan. However, part of approving that project. In looking at potential impact fees, if you will, how can they offset their impact on our system? As they go about developing did require a traffic impact analysis and. I'll I'll give it my my best go on an answer and then turn it back over to Preston. But what our multimodal plan did consider is actually restricting access off of majority of our side streets. That intersect with highway two west of boyer. In looking at how we can improve safety throughout that corridor, those left turn movements. In and out are really where we have our highest conflict points and that creates the most conject congestion. So back to how can we change behavior to help prevent widening a corridor? The, one of the first responses is access management. How do we limit how many points of connection we have? Along that highway two area. So ultimately, it is intended as as far as I am aware. That at some point in the future, highway two west of boyer would have a center turn lane, similar to what we've discussed. On a boyer avenue in front of the university place development. Really to accommodate some of those left turn movements into the developments. And private uses of those versus the streets, if that makes sense. So reduce the number of access points so that we have more access availability to some of the other development aspects of that. Preston, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I can't speak to that development specifically in their traffic study, if they were required to do, one should be addressing that specifically and and. Accommodating what's in the multimodal master plan in their traffic studies for individual developments. That's that's the point of this. Is to act as the guiding document for traffic studies that are required for developments to be done and how they access their site. And Amanda hit it on the head. It's it's about access management. We don't want multiple driveways or multiple streets intersecting on US two. That then diminishes its ability to to do what it needs to do as a principal arterial in the city. So that is, that's the point. We don't want to create multiple driveways. We want to control at major intersections with other locations being right and right out restricted with the occasional left turns in. To maintain that efficient flow and maintain the good safety as well as as reduce the number of crossings of our community path and sidewalks. By the community path on that one side is is going to be really nice with limited interruptions of crossing streets, except for your major. Collectors and arterials that it's intersecting with. So that's that's the other major benefit of access management. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Amanda, the next question, probably Amanda, it's you. Is I T D planning to replace the highway two bridge in Dover to expand the lanes?
The highway two bridge in Dover, it's already expanded to accommodate additional capacity in the future. So no, they don't have plans to further expand it, if I understand the question correctly.
Correct. And then it relates to a secondary question, which I think you've addressed, but I'm going to kick it over to you again. There's a question why the city's proposed concept for highway two. Would have more lanes than the Dover Bridge can accommodate.
Yeah, the Dover, the Dover Bridge, which is on that. West entrance point is significantly wider for the future to be able to accommodate additional lanes than it does today. The multimodal plan does not suggest more lanes within city limits of Sandpoint. Then. What is at the bridge? So that that's an inaccurate assessment.
Mr. Mayor, I think they might be talking about the bridge that goes over the slough. And using it with the actual Dover Bridge. In the first part of that question, when they're talking about widening.
I was wondering that as well in the the part that.
They might think that other part of the slough is in Dover.
Gotcha. So yeah, but the first bridge that you actually come to, if you were leaving Sandpoint heading to. Dover is across the slough, as Counselor Rule points out, and it is only two lanes. I am not aware of any plans at this point to widen that. No.
Okay, thank you. Maybe correct.
Well, I don't think they could think the Dover Bridge was going to get any bigger, but. Already the best star.
Next question, what route would be expected for someone traveling from Upper West Pine? So kind of the SWAC YMCA area to Winter Ridge.
Typically, it would be to use a collector, which would be pine. So all the way continue eastbound on pine, similar as you would do today. And maneuver through the intersection in the future by taking a right turn. Onto US two and then taking a left turn on to. South Boyer. Alternatively, one could head southbound on Division. Head westbound on Highway Two and take a right into Winter Ridge.
Or you could go eastbound on pine and then southbound on Ella. And then.
And signals in.
That would might be the fastest, actually.
I would point out that those three options are in comparison today where you have approximately ninety-two options for how to get from. Creating what we call the paradox of choice.
Yeah.
And every time I leave my house, I face the paradox of choice because I have a hundred options for how to get to the other side of town. So yes, one thing that this does is it creates collectors and it creates minor arterials, which we don't currently have. So we hear all about pass-through traffic, cut-through traffic all the time. The cut-through traffic exists because we're not giving people good routes. We're giving them a hundred bad routes.
Great point.
Hey, I should have addressed it to you, Counselor. So we have a number of questions in that couplet area, so I can kind of group those. So I think we'll get kind of into the downtown core with the couplet. There was a question about whether or not the city had analyzed. Local air quality impacts from the proposed couplet, and I believe you addressed that briefly in the simulation.
Yeah, air quality is a little bit different calculation, which is not included in. In any of this that we've done anyway. Great house gas emission calculations are derived from vehicle miles traveled estimations, which was not a metric evaluated here. It's it's something that could be evaluated, no doubt. To see what that impact is. But hasn't been. To date.
Thank you. Another one in that couplet area. Your press, your simulations that were shown tonight. Showed a significant traffic congestion at twenty thousand vehicles per day. In a do-nothing scenario. And the question is. What type of congestion existed in two thousand and ten, pre-bypass? When numbers were up at that level?
Preston, I think that's probably a question for you. I'm not sure if we, I know we have A D T, but I'm not sure if we have level of service in two thousand and ten. Do you?
No, I don't. Wasn't around to verify that for sure, how that looked and felt, but.
I just remembered we have it in the urban area transportation plan, actually from two thousand and nine. So that is a question that we could do a little bit of homework on and maybe answer online.
That would be a good question for written answer.
Yes.
You came out with that. Chief is really luckily, lucky because I was just gonna call him up.
You could ask anybody who lived here in two thousand and nine what First and Cedar were like back then. It's not pleasant.
No. I miss the cows and the pigs. Just kidding. Pass my bedtime, everybody. Losing it.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to summarize and get us through these as quickly as possible.
Take your time.
I think there is some misunderstanding with this question that came through online. So Amanda, I'm gonna direct this one over to you again. Regarding the proposed concept of first and superior to US two. Why would the city propose a truck cut through? When the intention was to eliminate large commercial truck traffic from sandpoints downtown?
Hundred percent the goal. In fact, I will admit that Chief and I both might follow trucks to better understand why they're going through our downtown today when they have such a beautiful alternate route. So the reason goes back to in reality, drivers are following typically what their Google app tells them to follow. So when the path of least resistance is through our downtown area to get, for example, if you were on Division or in Dover and you wanted to go to Sagal or Corta Lane and you're a truck, your Google map is not gonna send you north to get onto the byway and then head south. While I think that is a really good intention, at this point, it's not warranted. The volume doesn't warrant that type of restriction. As far as when you're in Sagal and you want to go to Dover, for example, or you want to head north through the downtown section. That again is what we're seeing more often than not is vehicles taking that exit in lieu of going north just to head back south because it's the path of least resistance. So with this plan, the solution to really get to the crux of the, the question there is to provide east-west connection. It is not to encourage truck traffic. Should truck traffic volume get to be where we have pigs and cattle as we've been referring to all night and old, you know, trucks coming through that area? We do have options in the future to have conversations with ITD, for example, about restricting everything but local deliveries on ninety-five, restricting further movements through Pine Street. It does take data to support that. And as of right now, the data doesn't support restricting that traffic. Preston, do you want to correct me there? If I misstated anything, you're welcome to.
No, no, you're good there. Yep. I don't think you had.
Okay. Staying kind of in that area. Next question. Wouldn't traffic back up quickly between fifth and sixth on Pine with the two lights so close together?
Preston, that's you.
Yeah, we can talk about that briefly at the end of the presentation about the, the importance of well, I, I'll get, I'll, I'll talk about it in two different ways. We'll talk about the short term when the signal's still here in that distance, because right now that's, that's actually more concerning to me than the future condition. So the short term condition, when the signal's still on Boyer and that distance there, it is, it will be imperative that ITD coordinates their signals so they talk to one another so that the predominant movement in that situation is being served so that we don't have queues spilling back into one another. In the long term, it's much less of an issue and, and you saw a little bit of that in the, in the simulations. That we didn't see vehicles queuing up past the halfway mark in that condition. And because this is a T-intersection right here without a, a fourth leg, you can run your intersection much more efficiently with phasing. You, you have not to get too technical on signal timing, but you have less phases in your timing. So you can run it more efficiently through that system. So in this case, we can, we can always push traffic through when we need to without having that back up into, into the intersection and we have restricted movements as well where this is a, this is a three leg, I don't know where that came from. We have a three-legged intersection here, but this is one way in one direction. So it's, it's almost like a two-phase signal in the east-west direction only. And then at this one, we don't have traffic going northbound since this is one-way southbound. So it's, we're able to operate it much more efficiently by reducing the number of phases in that signal timing system to reduce the, that propensity for having queuing spilling back. Thanks.
While we're talking about signals, and we addressed what type of signals would be contemplated as shown in the concepts. There's some specificity and concern about two-phase signals as opposed to four-phase signals. So are we that far along in the concepts?
Those are details that would be worked out in a signal design. So when these go to, when the design is determined as far as number of lanes and where the signal poles and all those things are going, when they're determining that design, they are also developing, there'll, there'll be a signal technician, oftentimes an electrical engineer that goes in and times the system in the controller and determines the most efficient way of doing that. ITD has their folks that do that. So that would be nothing on our end or the city's end that would be done. That's ITD and their controller determining what that looks like. Obviously, we made some assumptions on our end to model this of how we believe it should function in its most efficient manner to serve the volume that's going through that and to serve the pedestrians and bikes going through that. But that exact timing that we used will likely be slightly different from what ITD ends up using.
We're gonna talk about a couple of specific streets. So if there's questions on, one, the proposed concept. How does it solve the F-rating at Euclid and Highway two?
Yes, the, the F-rating at Euclid and US two here is today, it's because of this left turn out of Euclid. And to another extent, sometimes the left turn going into Euclid. I've also seen that back up at times depending on how much traffic's going east through here. So both of those are causing that level source F condition. And in the, in the short term, as well as the long-term plan, we are, we are restricting that to a right-in, right-out. So you can only turn right in and you only turn right out of that street. And that, that fixes that little source F condition because it, you then are only doing right turns. Your left turns are typically your high delay movements because you're having to wait for two movements to get your gap in there. Whereas a right turn, you're waiting for a single movement and you, and you can usually shoot that gap a lot quicker than you can in the left turn condition. So that's how that fixes.
Okay. So let's move on to Ella. There's a couple of questions with related concerns about proposed concept and that it will result in increased traffic on Ella.
Yeah, go ahead, Amanda.
I was gonna pass it to you. You read my mind, so.
It will increase traffic on Ella. It, it's a dead end today. So creating that connection will put traffic on Ella that is not there today. And, and that's on, that is on purpose to serve the purpose of the greater transportation network in, in the hierarchy of streets and creating our connectivity there. It's in the, it's in the perfect location for another signal. ITD has their stipulations on where they want their signals, given the spacing number of feet between intersections. And right now, Michigan is not it. And Ella would be your most optimal location for the next signal between Division and Boyer or Pine. Because it was kind of that midway point. So you get good progression of your vehicles, that platoon of vehicles that goes through your signal. And hopefully they time them appropriately so they're all coordinated. So that is that platoon reaches your next intersection that continue to go on. When you get poor spacing, then you, you start to break up that good progression of, of traffic. So that's the overall purpose. But yes, it does, it does increase traffic on Ella.
Okay. I think you addressed this in your presentation, but because we have a couple of questions, it's probably good to go back and address this again. Can you talk about the couplet and impacts to pedestrians? So how do they get across that? And how does it impact our community as a walking town?
Amanda, do you want to go to one of those?
I think Amanda's fallen asleep.
Frozen.
Frozen. Before she's falling asleep.
Hey, she's sleeping.
Wake up.
Let's see, maybe I can take over. Well, I don't know if I can take over, but she's already sharing, but let me try to. Oh, there we go.
And we're getting through here. We're, we're close to the end.
Okay. Okay, so let's talk about this again. I know we addressed it several times today around the couplet and the active, the active users, active being pedestrian and bicycle users. So we still have the connection of church east and west here, and that will continue to be a crossing. I anticipate crosswalks, crossing the couplet on both of these roadways for pedestrian use and bicycle use. We talked about Oak Street. That middle section will be pedestrian bike only. And, and then they'll continue on their way east and west in, in that fashion. And Amanda mentioned the bike facilities anticipated here. This is really your predominant bike movement, east and west that gets you to city beach. Will continue to have sidewalks both sides of the street on Pine here. Cedar Street remains the way it is with its facilities. So there, there really isn't any restriction in any pedestrian or bicycle movement here in the couplet area. And we will have the, the community path on the one side here, paralleling the southbound movement all the way down through this area. Not sure what more to add here. We talked about the potential for hybrid beacons of some sort as protected crossings along Oak Street. That probably addresses that.
I'm gonna ask a safe question that I know will be you because we don't have Amanda back yet. Have there been traffic flow studies to determine where the traffic bottlenecks are?
Yeah, those are, those are coming from the traffic counts. So we have traffic counts that tell us what those existing conditions are. The general traffic volumes, ADT volumes are showing generally, but those flows are on an hourly basis to a daily basis. So those are, those are indications. The simulation modeling obviously tells you what that flow is. We calibrate those models to existing conditions to then forecast out to the future with the future volumes to show what those flows are in between intersections.
Why was a northbound on ramp to US ninety-five at East Superior not included?
I'm back. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, almost.
Almost. Okay, sorry. I had to connect to be on my phone. My computer shut down. Is that, you better?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm sure there are many others that were here during that time that could speak more intelligently to it. But I will at least just say that it, it is extraordinarily expensive, particularly at this time now that the byway is constructed. It was contemplated when the byway went in and for a multitude of reasons, cost being one, environmental being another, right-of-way acquisition being another. Quite frankly, it was a feat to get the offbound, offbound ramp on to Superior that we have in place today. So the simple answer is it isn't a realistic consideration.
Okay. Next question. What is the city doing to optimize flow on key secondary roads and arter- arterials?
Preston, do you want to take that? I think there's a variety of definitions of optimum flow, so.
Yeah, so if, if we look at some of these streets that trying to pick where the one I
I can give you a couple of examples that they cite. A signal light at Division and Baldi. A signal light at Boyer and Baldi. Or a train underpass, overpass on Boyer.
Yeah, those are all. Yeah, those are all good, good suggestions and, and things that were actually looked at and, and evaluated. So Baldi is one of those key locations that what the plan is trying to do is emphasize that corridor as a good truck route. So that eventually we can get those trucks off of Division, which is where our schools are and where we're trying not to have a lot of truck traffic and make it more conducive to active transportation users. So as we make those improvements, so suggested there on Baldi with a signal at Boyer and the connection over to US two with that bridge, that will get us to that point. So that, that is the end goal, is to make those improvements so we can get trucks there and take them off of Division and, and transform Division into the street that we all want it to be.
We have a couple of questions about why signalized intersections instead of roundabouts. Mister Mayor, that was included in the presentation.
Yeah, I think we went into a lot of detail there.
Okay. Uh, next one, uh, the city adopted Explorer Sandpoint Bike Routes Network for use in town in two thousand and sixteen with a north-south route on Boyer and an east-west route on Oak, both of which would cross the proposed couplet. Will these two routes continue as established?
Yes.
And can you speak to safety measures?
Safety measures in general have been applied in all these concepts. Many of them we talked through. The safety bridge at First is, is partly a safety measure. The, the couplet itself is a, a safety measure, reducing conflicts for crossings of pedestrians and bikes at those locations. Division Avenue, we did a roadway safety audit. That was a kind of a separate project done by LTAC. Funded by LTAC, I guess I should say, and, and applied the results of that recommendations were applied to this. That, that is a major safety improvement, many, many, many different improvements. And if you read through the MTMP, there's a synopsis of that roadway safety audit and all the recommendations that are all one hundred percent safety related are all included into that. So that was a big component of that one. And then the, the access management components on US two, the either closure of roadways or the restriction of movements on, on some roadways to right and right outs are all safety-related elements.
Okay. Amanda, this one's probably your way. When the city approved the housing development at the former University of Idaho property on Boyer, what discussions and costing was done of train under and overpasses and working with developers to share costs?
That's a great question. So I think it was actually in two thousand and nine. I, I'm sorry, I think it was two thousand and twelve, right in that area of time, we, University Place as well. Unity, there was an entire analogy. Unity, there was an entire analysis done by David Evans and Associates that was paid for um the private property owner back then to look at how could we have Boyer Avenue cross over, under, or around um that location of the tracks at Baldi. And I think in total, there were sixteen different concepts that were considered at that time. So that information in its entirety when fair appears during our planning process, we said, hey, take a look at these, please. OTAC. One of their bridge engineers, in fact, solutions as well as the one that's, can you hear me okay?
Camera off and see if we can better pick up your audio.
Is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry for the trouble. Um. So again, uh OTAC actually is is also a bridge engineering firm. They have a a whole slew of experts across the country and uh they looked at a variety of those sixteen concepts. They didn't take a full deep dive into costing all of them, but looked at the practicality of implementing them and the costs associated with it. There's a variety of challenges um that go into each one of those ideas, whether it's an overpass and underpass going around it. And fundamentally, our soil conditions, A, make it very challenging to do any form of a tunnel application in our jurisdiction um in our area. It's not impossible. There's always a a way when there's enough money. However, because especially given the groundwater and the poor soil conditions. However, what I think is probably the biggest hurdle for whether it be an overpass or an underpass in our conversations with OTAC's bridge engineers as well is the percent of grade, meaning how steep you can uh go under a road. There's requirements about that. And so what we found is actually the point at which you would connect back, whether an overpass or an underpass, is actually back at the tracks that are further to the south on the south end, which is the Union Pacific Tracks. And then um again, to the north, you end up being about halfway through the university uh development, almost to Mountain View. So really large footprint to fit in a bridge or a tunnel at that location. So ultimately, what's included in the multimodal plan is a signal at that intersection and providing one could call it a tunnel, but it's more um it's more like a bridge underneath the university um or the Union Pacific Tracks, I'm sorry, and then connecting into Fifth Avenue. As far I I do want to clarify, I'm sorry, because part of their question was with the recent development of the University Place. Was that reanalyzed? And the answer is no. What was analyzed is how much volume of traffic as a result of that development needed to contribute to the solution that was already in our multimodal plan, which was a signal. So that developer paid approximately eighty six thousand dollars to help fund the signal that will eventually go at Baldi and Boyer. As well as they are widening by three feet the Boyer Avenue section between Baldi and Mountain View to accommodate a turn pocket. A turn lane uh in the center for that development, and those costs are on there uh it.
Okay, I think we've, Mister Mayor, we're down to like six questions. I've got a group that are all kind of the same thing. I'll get those together. Um, next question, why not make Boyer and Highway Two the entrance to Sandpoint? To enhance and make people feel welcome. Think of potential for a gateway concept.
I think that through our uh, the answer I would provide is uh through our arts and culture, uh master planning effort, as well as our parks and recreation planning effort and our comprehensive plan. I think we as a community probably need to better solidify where our gateways are. I think there are portions of town west of Boyer that would maybe feel a little awkward if that was our gateway, when the entrance of town is arguably further to the west. We've had conversations about it superior in first, or is it pine in first? Is it bridge in first? I think that takes a closer look by um probably a team that's that's different than Preston and I.
Okay, we're gonna go downtown now. Why not just make first one way between Cedar and Oak? And pinch it down to make ninety degree parking drop offs and allow folks to see shops uh with everything else remaining two-way.
I'm glad you can't see my face with that question. Um. That's a really thoughtful question, and I, from a technical perspective, will hand uh it off to Preston. I I say my face because I'm smiling a little bit. I think many downtowns have found good ways to have one-way traffic through their town. Our community weighed heavily in two thousand and twelve to have two-way traffic throughout First Avenue and Cedar. And for that reason, that's what our uh concept still includes today, and that's consistent with the feedback we heard uh during our community engagement process with the multimodal planning effort and um that's what will continue to move forward with our downtown revitalization because of that feedback that I think I'll say this statement and Preston, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Could it work? Probably.
Yeah, you're exactly right. But that was gonna be my response is, yeah, it's an option. It it really comes down to what we want. And as part of this process, it was not a consideration uh based on feedback we'd received from public uh at the time. Uh, and to maintain that two-way travel in the the parking that it is.
I'll just add um in the downtown streets design guide from two thousand twelve, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I I was part of that group too, and and that was certainly part of the discussion. Not first avenue is one way, but there was definitely discussion about um closing First Avenue to vehicle traffic. And um and there, you know, I think there was, there was ample discussion around it. Um, but at the end of the day, um, the business community down there weighed in and and felt that they that would be a too negative of an impact. So it's related.
Sidewalks, Amanda, let's do a couple sidewalks. Uh, it's noted about uh Ella being an important street for kids walking to Farman and other schools. If it was made a third uh through street with sidewalks being installed on both sides from Spruce to Ontario.
Can you say the last part of the question again? I was tracking till the very end. I'm sorry.
If Ella is made a through street, would sidewalks be installed on both sides, Spruce to Ontario?
I think in the long term, that would be ideal. What I can speak to is in recognizing the long-term solution of adding a signal at Ella. The first step is to get it on one side. And currently Ella does not, for majority of its length, particularly north of Pine, does not have sidewalk on either side. So um we're really fortunate that the local option tax passed Ella in installing new sidewalk in that corridor is one of our shorter term projects that has been included as a result of voters approving um that ballot measure. So placing a sidewalk on one side of Ella is the starting point. Would we like sidewalks on both sides? Um, quite frankly, of every street in town, yes. Do we have the money for that? No, but we are uh strategically planning to address the fact that Ella will likely have more vehicular traffic on it in the future. So that's that's what I have on that one.
So that's one of our projects highlighted on our website for local option tax.
Correct. That's that's correct. Yes.
Uh, and then second sidewalk question, will sidewalks on the southeast side of Highway Two from Boyer to Dover be part of the design process?
I think I think maybe southwest was the intent, right? If it's to Dover.
Yeah.
Um, that's ideal, absolutely. I think a multi-use path has been um you know, obviously a a priority that's been implemented. The challenges on the south side are all of the uh businesses and their access points, but we can certainly create sidewalks with connectivity to businesses. So um, my sense is that at some point, if the data supports that ITD needs to move that project forward, meaning adding a turn lane, for example, um in that corridor, we would certainly um advocate for our complete streets preferences as a community and seek to have sidewalks on the south side as well.
Is is that something that ITD would fund or help fund, or would that would that be solely on following the city?
I think it's a partnership for sure.
A couple of questions, um ITD related. Um, first is level of service scores from ITD. Where are those? Are they posted somewhere? Um, and do those include time of day analysis?
Preston, do you want to take that one?
Oh, if I understand it correctly, I interpret that as the low service standard or the description of level of service, which is ITD uses the the national, the highway capacity manual, the HCM as their standard. And those those standards are on page fifty-four of the MTMP table two, which goes through the level of service descriptions by letter grade. A brief description of what those are and the average delay range between signalized and unsignalized intersections. Um, so that that is the basis that every jurisdiction would use who's following the highway capacity manual. The, and then if you want to get in details of the actual levels of service on these roadways, those are the subsequent pages beyond that fifty-five and and going forward fifty-seven, uh go through those details of what was service.
I think I'm gonna um add some context to this, I think for what they're looking for is are those located and updated on some type of a regular basis by ITD? And then did they exist somewhere outside of this point in time from our multimodal plan?
So those standards have been around for as long as I've been alive, uh highway capacity manuals included those, and those ranges have not changed. Um, as far as I can remember, so those standards are are kind of set in stone and are included in the in the highway capacity manual. Most updated version is the sixth edition of of the HCM. Um, and they can be found there. Um, any description around those.
I think what they're looking at is where they're scoring like an intersection or a section of roadway. And are those, is that happening on a regular basis and
I'm not aware that they're doing regular updates to analysis on their systems unless there's a problem that a city brings up of, hey, can you guys look at this? And then they they relook at them. I don't, I don't believe that they go through and do regular updates to scoring their intersections unless there's a an an issue brought up to them.
Uh, next question, if the couplet was to be constructed, is there data on the number of commercial trucks that would be routed between the bypass and Highway Two?
Preston, is, was it around that eleven percent? Do you remember?
I'm trying to remember what the current ITD estimate is based on their counts, and it it's somewhere in that ten to fifteen percent range of current traffic is is heavy truck. And and they classify heavy trucks as being like a a tow truck and above. But as as far as estimations on how that would shift, I don't know how to estimate that. You could probably assume it's a a consistent estimation of ten to fifteen percent would continue along Pine down to First and Superior. Is that is that the direction they said?
Yeah.
Or then the couplet, yeah, you you would, you would assume that that would stay consistent.
Okay. Here's my last one, and Mister Mayor and Amanda, I think this will go Amanda's way. Um, I, and this is consolidating a number of questions for, so for those who wrote these, so you're not gonna hear your question exactly as written, but you're all getting at the same thing. ITD doesn't project that the city would um that we reach uh traffic levels that would require additional capacity on Highway Two until twenty forty. Why is the city pursuing this project now when ITD hasn't picked it up off the shelf? We've heard uh discussion about creating um predictability for um businesses and those along the corridor. And there is a concern that designs get changed. So fundamentally, why pick this up now?
That's a good question, Mister Mayor. Do you want me to take that one, or do you want to?
Please do.
I think in our presentation, we we answered it, but I'll I'll reiterate um it again. It comes in two buckets. Bucket one is ITD and growth and volume and if we maybe just look the other direction and and hope that ITD doesn't check their level of service and growth happens and maybe this project will just always stay away. Um, so we could keep that bucket to the side for a second. When we launched this multimodal planning effort, as we started the presentation with, it was engaging our community. It wasn't about engaging ITD and what was wrong with their system. Um, it was what what are our citizens concerned about? And we listed those in the staff report. We list them in the multimodal plan. We talked about them tonight. We had those eight points of concerns. Um, it was my first week working for the city five years ago that a gentleman and I went on a walkabout, and he wanted to show me how unsafe it was for him to cross Boyer and Highway Two because of the skewed intersection and how he almost has a near miss there on a regular basis because he's crossing and someone's looking to their left and doesn't look to the right and sees that he's in the crosswalk. So we've just been hearing that concern for ten, fifteen years. So we're picking the project back up because we have unresolved issues where our streets interface with the highway. And we're trying to find solutions to fix them. So we're not trying to pick this conversation back up to advance construction per se. We want to solidify solutions for our citizens on our system that we care about. And the only way to do that is in partnership with ITD because we have two different jurisdictions working here together. I think the other component I would note is we don't have the funds to design this project, nor would it be viable to design something on someone else's jurisdictional uh highway. In other words, we could spend a million dollars designing our solution without ITD to find that for some reason they don't accept it. And so in this case, it's, here's our concept. Approach ID ITD for funding. We hope they'll say yes, or we had hoped it's ultimately council's decision in that regard to start the feasibility assessment. In other words, here's the city's concept of how to fix our system issues. How much is it gonna cost to do that? So ITD running cost analysis on our concept, they're of their concept and their design. Which is what was presented in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen that we said we didn't want. So the request is, ITD, could we take this concept and update the design that you did before? So that as traffic volumes back now in ITD's bucket, as volumes might increase over time, this is the solution that would be in place. I think the purpose of the modeling back to twenty forty and really showing those simulations is my sense is at some point, given the volume, particularly in our peak season, because again, the simulations are non-peak season, is that our citizens are gonna be really concerned about congestion. And I think it's critical that when we become concerned about congestion on our system, because as Counselor Welker pointed out, we haven't really provided a good system of network and layers. And he currently has, what was it, a hundred bad options to get to Winter Ridge? Um, that it's us that's gonna be wanting that solution to be implemented, maybe even before hand. So that was a long-winded answer, and I know it's late, but that's what I got.
No, that was perfect, Amanda. And what a great question to end on, because it really you know, it that that's the purpose of why we're all here and what we're what we're here to contemplate. So that's it.
That is a summary of the questions we got both uh in here, in the room, as well as online.
Great. Um, well, just um Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Does the council feel that the multimodal transportation plan, you know, as written, gives staff the authority to solicit funds and promote projects from that plan without further public review? Or is it kind of public review that we're gonna give now? Or you've got all, you've got a multitude of concepts in the multimodal. So are we gonna be able to say, does council feel like staff can say that the community has vetted all of these and is in support of all of them already?
Yeah, so as was discussed already, any, and these are all bubble diagrams, right? Those are cartoons. So before any of these are moved to move forward, anywhere near construction, they would have to go through a design process, a public review process. So there will be.
From the city or from the state? Like, are we gonna have a workshop on this phase of development?
Yeah, there there will be plenty of opportunity for public review of any concept that we're to that were to move forward towards construction.
So prior to the audit, so the ITD, with our ideas are, we're gonna have a community workshop on this proposal.
No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. I I thought you're asking if, so if, no, that's, that's what we're deciding here on May third. Right, is to whether or not to accept this one amendment to which would essentially move the intersection at Boyer to the east. The all the, all the rest of it is already approved, right? And so, so if we, so if your question is around the couplet specifically.
That's around the thirteen different, you know, programs or the concepts that are independent. Which isn't a part of, are we saying that those are already completely vetted with the community?
That there's no. So right now we have an approved plan with approved concepts. That's what we're sitting with. Those have been approved by the public, by the council with the support of the public. If if any of those concepts were to go, were to move forward towards design and ultimately construction in the design process, they would be further vetted by the public. So at any point along the way, you know, take any one of those concepts, there will be a public process like this where where the public has the opportunity to weigh in and the council will decide to what degree to integrate those comments into the final design.
Well, this public process is not really feeling that great.
Mr. Mayor, can I chime in here for a second, please?
Please do, Amanda.
Um, I'm gonna give an, by way of an example, because I think I understand the question, and I'm gonna take it away from US two and ITD. So on Division Avenue, I think that there is a consensus in our community from our multimodal planning effort for Division. We desire to shrink the footprint of that pavement and really help provide improved connectivity for pedestrians and kids and all of the results of our road safety audit. That is a corridor our community is on board with improving. The multimodal plan includes a figure for Division Avenue. That gave city staff authority, since we're talking about, you know, what does it really mean to have this adopted multimodal plan? That gave city staff authority to say, hey, there's a child pedestrian safety grant in the pipeline. What projects should city staff be looking at and applying for a grant? So we look through our multimodal plan. We do an assessment of which one of the projects in our capital improvement plan would best fit the criteria for that grant. And we say, okay, child pedestrian safety grant, we think Division would really score high. So we go to city council, and they make a decision about whether or not we should even apply for that grant. So it's not a staff decision that just because it's in our multimodal plan that we as staff even have authority to apply for a grant. So step one is, does council approve us asking for money? Two is council said, yes, you can apply. We got the grant. Go back to council. Council, do we have authority to accept this money? Council says, yes, that's not a staff assignment in that regard. Then we get the grant. Council says, yes, you can take this money from the state. And we say, great, we would like to move forward with a design consultant. Division's a really small design because it's a phased project, the one that we're using for the pedestrian grant. So it doesn't require council approve the engineering component of that, meaning the consultant's design. Typically, it does because the dollar amounts enough. So we would go back to city council and say, just like we did this evening. Is it okay to award a contract to ASLA to do the design for Traverse Park? And council gets to make a decision at that point. Then, great, now we have our consultants on board. So they start taking the concept and they start adding details to the concept. Then we go back to the public, which is what we're doing on Division, and we're going to be hosting here in the next couple of weeks, another workshop on that Division Avenue corridor. And we're gonna look at our consultants, further details of what's in the concept. We're gonna get feedback from the community, and then ultimately, before we go out for bid, we have to go back to council and the public and say, this is what the consultant designed. Can we go out for bid for construction? Get the bids. Then we come back to council and we say, are you okay with us awarding this construction contract for this design based upon this price? Do you still want to spend the money? And if the answer is yes, then we move forward with the project. So I lost count, but there are many, many more opportunities, particularly depending upon the complexity of a project that we are going back at every step along the way to seek public feedback as well as even authority to apply for money. So while we might be coming forward on May third to request an amendment to this plan, we would be coming back yet again to have a conversation with council and the public once we have a better understanding of cost of this concept with feasibility to go to ITD. And we want you as staff to focus on the wastewater treatment plant, skip August meeting with ITD. They meet every August. We're gonna go next year. That's council's decision. So staff, no, we do not have authority to go forward and start asking for money or start spending money without more public engagement on every single concept that is in any of our molds or any of our master plans. Sorry, that's my answer.
Thank you for breaking that down, Amanda. This is a much more thorough answer.
Yeah, I appreciate that too. However, I do want to make a comment. I know how that process works. I know Amanda knows how that process works. With each one of those layers, we have fewer options to comment on. But with this, we can be like that. The transportation corridors are pretty much set. Then we get this word that's like, okay, yeah, we can put them, but we can't talk about that because that part's already been approved. So we have options over here. And so it just limits our ability, it limits the public's ability to be able to come in and participate in the process. And quite frankly, you know, just historically, you know, there's a couple of things the city fought so hard to get rid of. You know, and then when it went away, you know, we all just breathed aside a little bit, you know, because it was really those three choices that we thought to ITD when they were shoving down our vote was like, we needed to vote it, we needed to vote for one, A, B, or C. And we voted for a couple, because that was the lesser of the three evils, right? And then when that all went away and traffic calmed, I really feel like, you know, maybe it's a community with, maybe it's a COVID community. But I'm not sure how many people actually participated in the transportation plan. And so that's where I'm feeling right now. I feel like this is what it felt like in two thousand fifteen when ITD came and said, we're coming, get ready, you got your choice, A, B, or C. And that's kind of where what it feels like now. So and I, and I think a lot of the general public is feeling that because there are a lot of people and a lot of citizens, they're going like, oh, my God, this is really on our doorstep now. We have to pay attention. And now we're only finding out that we might even be able to have a public hearing.
Thank you for your comments. With that, this meeting is adjourned at ten forty five. I want to thank our consultant Preston Stinger from Fairs and Peers for being here this evening. Thank you, Preston. Really appreciate it. Thank you, city staff, for all the work that you did putting this workshop together and members of the public, your participation. Thank the council. It was a long one.